And welcome to the November 19th Town of East Hampton zoning board of appeals meeting. We have a full agenda this evening as we normally do, and there's quite a few here in the public IC as well. So for those of you that do not know our procedures, I'm just going to walk through them to make life easier so I don't have to repeat things many times. For one thing, there's no speaking from the audience is... Oh, you can't hear?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I hope that's better.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear?
Still can't.
Is that okay? Yeah, maybe LTV can turn the mic up a little bit.
No, you're really gonna have to speak.
Speak into it, okay, okay. Excuse me. Okay, I'll try to do that. So, just so that I don't have to keep repeating this, the way it works this evening is for our first public hearing, which I believe many of you possibly are here for, we will have, I will read it into the record, the application to the record, the board member whose district this is. The first one is in Springs. This is Vice Chair Roy DeLaine's district. Roy will give a field report. There was a technical glitch with the photos downloading, so we won't be able to see all of his photos, but Eric Schatz will show a few from the planning department's files. So that's called our field report. And then next, the applicant or the applicant's agent is allowed 10 minutes to speak, and our legislative secretary Denise Evarice will be keeping track of time when there's so many people. So the applicant or their agent gets 10 minutes to give their presentation. If they have like a landscape architect, that person gets, or something like that, consultant gets three minutes. And then after that, we open it, after the consultants, we open it up to the planning department, in this case it would be Eric Schatz, to give their presentation and the board asks questions. Then we open it up to the public, whoever wishes to speak, and the public gets, will have three minutes each, okay? And again Denise will be keeping track of that. So this is what I'd like not to repeat. When you come up, unless you are an attorney, I have to swear you in. So to make life easy, please come up to the microphone, give us your name so Denise can get it clearly and spell it possibly, your address, and then kindly raise your right hand and I will swear you in, okay? And then we can move along quicker that way. Another thing important is there is no questions or comments from the audience. This is being televised and it's a record, so everything has to be done from your end up at the podium, okay? Good. So with that, we will get a move on because we have a full agenda besides the first application this evening. Our first applicant is New Singular Wireless LLC. Lot size and location, 26,153 square feet at 465 Old Stone Highway, Springs, tax map number 300-103-6-24. Description is to construct a new personal wireless service facility, PWSF, consisting of nine antennas, eight... Oh, I'm sorry, it's still, it's still, okay, sorry, I gotta really speak. Normally it's a lot better than this. If LTV can make an adjustment, that would be great. Okay, I'll start over on this here with, I'm gonna start over. To construct a new personal wireless service facility consisting of nine antennas, 18 remote radio heads and associated equipment, also proposed is a GPS unit and a 15 kilowatt emergency generator with all equipment to be situated within a new 50-foot tall campanile structure. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to Section 255-4-20 of the town code due to the proximity of freshwater wetlands. A variance of 24 feet from Section 255-4-30 of the town code, whereas a setback from freshwater wetlands of 76 feet is proposed, and a minimum setback of 100 foot is required. A variance of 25 feet from Section 255-11-72D of the town pyramid, the town code pyramid law, two variances from Section 255-550 of the town code due to the proximity of the campanile to the northern property line and its proximity to a habitable structure or outdoor area where people congregate, as per the specific special permit standards, along with any other relief that may be necessary. This is in a zoning district of B residence. The flood zone here is X, and the secret class is unlisted and counseled. Do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Nobody has provided that for me yet.
Sorry, you can't speak from the audience, once again. You can come up though, to the m...
I need your original affidavit. And your...
I saw that, yeah, in there. I'm not sure if that's...
It's a mute button.
I'm not sure if that's, you can tell me, but...
They got them right here.
Yeah, they have them right there, yeah.
We do see that they were copied in the...
Yes.
They're, you know, photocopies in Exhibit D, I believe.
Notice seems to be in order.
Thank you, thank you, council. Okay, Board Member DeLaine, if you would, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did visit the site this afternoon and did take photos. Due to a glitch in downloading on the computer there, I was unable to load the photos, but I did witness that the site was properly posted. It actually had two postings, one on the common drive towards, on the north side of the property towards the common drive, and one on the south side of the property towards chapel lane.
Did we turn on our mic?
Our mics are on.
Mics are on.
I'm right here, my mic is right here.
Denise?
No, it's, you have to really speak directly into it. It's not an LTV issue.
Okay, that's a shame.
They can't adjust them. You actually have to practically be on top of the mic.
This is the first time I remember having to do this.
We do this for years and we don't have...
I know. I don't know why it's, they're set that way, but there's not anything LTV can do because it's our internal speaker system. I don't know if somebody changed those or not, but in order to be heard tonight, you actually have to practically be eating the mic.
Okay. So anyway, I did, I did see that the property was properly posted. With that, I think Eric with the planning department has, has some aerials that we, and there are other photos, I think, in the presentation tonight that will come up that will make it clear, but this particular structure is designated to be in the rear of the church.
That's correct.
That's correct, so.
This is a property on Old Stone Highway. I don't have many pictures. I do have a picture of the front of, of the building.
Sorry?
Rather off-angle picture of the front of the building, but this is the chapel as it stands. This doesn't show you where the campanile is proposed, which would be off-picture, to the rear and just to the north of the chapel building.
Excuse me, Eric, I neglected to follow my rules and swear you in. If you'd, we all know, this is, you've introduced yourself, if you would.
Eric Schatz, planning department.
Thank you, Eric. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thanks, too.
I have some photos on my phone, I don't know.
Yeah, I do too, I do too. We're fine.
I wanted to see if there's anything else that'll help out here. I do have a copy of their visual analysis, but I'm sure that they intend to present that as well.
Yep.
Right, that's what I think, I think towards the course of the, oh, there you go. That's a pretty good picture there.
Yeah, so that's looking right at the chapel. The campanile would be here, and in fact, the whole purpose of this document is to show existing and proposed.
There you go.
The bell tower, campanile. And then there's various pictures from different angles, but I would assume that's in their presentation, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Roy. Any questions, board members, on the field report? No? Okay. Then we will move along to the applicant or the applicant's agent.
I'm just gonna have some photos put up here. My name is Kim Nason, I'm an attorney with Phillips Lidle.
Thank you. And your address, your address, please?
125 Main Street, Buffalo, New York, 14203.
Great. And do you have the spelling, Denise? Do you get on the spelling?
Yes, I've seen the document.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So what we'll just have behind me in the background is...
Yep.
We'll start with one of the photo sims just to show for reference here. We also have some copies, some blowups of the plots, if necessary. But just to give a general introduction here by way of background, I'll try and keep this brief, obviously, in my 10 minutes, but this proposal of a 50-foot campanile, AT&amp;T's proposal for a personal wireless service facility, has been before the town since 2015. It was originally filed as an extension of the bell tower structure on the chapel, and the planning board did not like that design. So they asked AT&amp;T to go back and look at some additional designs. The ARB chair actually is the one who suggested AT&amp;T explore the campanile design that we're at today. After that time, there were a few options that were before the planning board of Brown Pole, I believe, where the campanile is, the campanile. At this location, the planning board originally preferred the campanile design, but then said it could not reach a consensus. So that was a couple of years ago, and the application has essentially been on hold since then. So that's just background of where we stand. During that time, AT&amp;T has undergone an exhaustive alternatives analysis that I'll speak to, and in May of this year filed applications with the town asking that the town reactivate this 50-foot campanile application. We have several people here with us tonight who can answer questions. They don't need to speak initially in the interest of time, but if any specific questions come up, we have Vicki Brennan of Shore to Shore, the site acquisition consultant, who can speak to the alternatives, as well as Neil Arceo, the radio frequency engineer, who can speak to the coverage provided by the site and alternatives evaluated. Dave Revett from, he's the A&amp;E, and he can speak to some of the pyramid law questions. Dave Collins from Pinnacle can speak to any health and safety questions that arise. Matt Allen can speak to photo sims and the planning impacts generally of the proposed facility. Scott Horn can speak to the updated wetland delineation, which I'll get into. Mike Lynch is a real estate expert, and we actually have a report from him to submit for purposes of the record this evening, so any questions that come up.
So I'm just, I'm going to interrupt for one second, and then I'll let Roy comment, and this will come out of our time, not yours, but...
Okay.
I meant to say this earlier, and this, this has to do with procedure again.
Point of order, yeah.
And it has to do with, with other applicants as well.
Yep.
It has to do with your submission that came in yesterday?
Yes.
And it's, it's a full document here, okay? So, so this gives the board no time whatsoever to review it. It gives the planning department no time, whatever. It doesn't even give the planning department time to even get it circulated, or hard copies barely. So my point is, for this and other applicants, and we are taking up procedures and going back to our steady procedures at work sessions at the end of December and January, and just so you know, if there are, and this is, is the procedure this evening as well, but if there is significant information in this procedure that none of us have seen, we, as a board, will reserve the right to take a look at this information at our next work session, and if we deem that there was, there's pertinent enough information here that the hearing should be continued, then we will do that and we will put you on the next possible date.
Understood.
Just so you know. And otherwise, if you want the written record closed, kind of this evening, we haven't even looked at this, you can, you can kind of almost just say disregard what's in here. I imagine you don't want to do that, but we typically want it, my point being, we want this information to come in a week to 10 days before, to give us all time to read it.
Understood. And if the board needs additional time, we're happy to provide that. We want to answer any questions there may be. I'll just submit that that most recent filing mostly is not any new information. It was just meant to clarify a few points in response to Mr. Schatz's most recent technical memo, which we received October 22nd.
Okay. And, and, and again, and then we can get back to your time. Our calendar is very full, so if this happens, that you, probably the best date would be late, late February or March, because we're pretty much booked up with public hearings until then. So just so you know, and that's going to be my admonition to all the other agents on other applications as well, that's the way it has to go, okay? Thank you. You can continue now.
Okay. So essentially, like I mentioned, this application has been going on for several years. We reactivated it in May after a detailed alternatives analysis. So I'll just speak specifically to what we're asking for this evening. I have a couple of clarifications based on what was on the record and what we've submitted previously. So we are requesting an area variance for the fall-down zone for the northern property line. The requirement is the height of the structure, which is 50 feet, and we are 19 feet away from that property line. Similarly, a variance from the pyramid law from the same property line, which is also 31 feet. That is an updated clarification. And additionally, the area variance related to twice the height of the structure from any habitable structure or area where people congregate. So we are three feet approximately from the chapel. That is on purpose. It's meant to be a stealth design that is supposed to appear to be part of the chapel. That's why it's so close. And then in response to Mr. Schatz's memo, we got an updated measurement to the house that is to the east, and that is 83 feet away from the proposed facility. And then I would like to clarify, we are not seeking a variance for proximity to a wetland. So at Mr. Schatz's request, after the planning board meeting that was held in July, we performed an updated wetland delineation, since it had been some time since the application was before the town. That delineation, which is included in our October filing, provides that the campanile structure is 101 feet from the nearest point of the wetland.
Who performed the delineation?
We, it was performed by Labella, and we have Scott Horn here from Acer who...
Was it confirmed by the town?
It has not been confirmed by the town, and it is currently being confirmed by DEC.
Okay, but it does, it's not valid to this board, as you know, until the natural resources department gets out there and verifies the flags.
Okay.
So really, that doesn't mean anything now until that happens.
Okay. Understood. And then one other point is there were supposed to be, as part of the original application, a utility line running along that existing driveway to the north of the church. That has been moved south a bit, so there's currently no portion of the facility in the 100-foot wetland buffer, understanding that it has to be verified by the town. So we just wanted to make that clarification. And in addition, we do need the natural resources special permit for being within 100 feet of a wetland. So, and then obviously, we would need a seeker determination as well. So essentially, I just want to summarize briefly the extensive alternatives analysis that's been undertaken by AT&amp;T on this site. When the town was not able to give clear direction, the board seemed to be acknowledging there's a very clear gap. This is a significant gap here. There's no coverage at all, not even outdoor, and there's a clear need for a site here in this site.
Can you explain the nexus for, for these variances? We understand the coverage issue and...
Yes.
Your need to have coverage.
Yep.
But these are substantial variances that you're requesting.
Absolutely.
What's the nexus to allow a pyramid variance of this size and this...
So, so I agree with you, there are several variances we are requesting, and some of them are for a significant amount. That being said, the standard of review for variances being issued for public utility telecom applications is different than the typical balancing test. It has to do with whether or not the applicant has a clear gap, the site meets the gap, and it's the least intrusive means. So these variances are a direct result of AT&amp;T working to develop a design that is the least intrusive means of remedying their gap on the community that's consistent with community character, so that is the overall goal. So the filing that was done in May includes a detailed RF affidavit from Mr. Arceo and an alternatives analysis from Ms. Brennan that outlines all of the other alternatives that were looked at. One that I want to speak to specifically, that was in Mr. Schatz's memo that I would like to clarify, is the wooden utility pole option in the wooded area of the site. So AT&amp;T absolutely evaluated this site as it was suggested by the town. We wanted to work with the town and look for a solution that everyone preferred. That option in the tree line is not a viable option, and that has been well documented. We respectfully submit in our submissions. Essentially, there's a couple of factors. The facility would have to have two centerline heights due to the structure, which does not propagate as well as the campanile design. In addition, if the facility is going to be tucked into the tree line, it will not propagate. The tree line will prevent full propagation of the facility. So in order for a brown pole to be placed in the tree area, it would have to be significantly taller than the tree line, which we respectfully submit would be a more substantial visual impact. In addition, right now, as the campanile is proposed, all of the equipment is going to be housed within the campanile structure. If we have the wooden pole structure, we're going to have to put a generator outside, and it would not meet, it would not be permitted because it would not meet the town's noise ordinance requirements at the property line. No generator is a no-go for AT&amp;T. Given their first net obligations with the federal government, which are detailed in our submission, and just the general emergency needs of the site, especially in times of disaster, AT&amp;T does not construct sites without generators, and they're doing a full generator build-out, adding generators to existing sites as well. So the lack of a generator also makes that not a viable option. So we respectfully submit that we understood the town's request, we reviewed that option, and it is not a viable solution.
So my question, go ahead, just one more question.
We'll, we'll give you more time, because we're interrupting a little bit.
This, I mean, again, this is, it's not really a campanile structure. This is a cell tower mass to look like a campanile.
It's self-designed, correct.
Is that correct? So that's, call it like it is. But my question is, you're asking us to approve this thing in perpetuity and grant the variance in perpetuity. My question to you is, what is the, what is the future of cell towers and what will they look like in the future? Because you're asking us to approve this structure that's not really a campanile, an appendage on a church. Will, will cell towers of this height, of this magnitude be obsolete in one day soon?
I can't give you a definitive answer on that, but my understanding is no, and in terms of the scale of this facility, this is a...
We thought that about TV antennas, too, so, but so...
But that doesn't change the nature of the application before the board at this time, though, or the gap that has been demonstrated.
Well, the obligation of this board is to grant a variance that is in perpetuity, that is a substantial variance.
Correct. Subject to the deferential standard regarding the gap and the least intrusive means.
So again, we'll give you another minute or two for this, our questions, but just to get, before you move along, to get back to the, the pole, and I know Eric Schatz, we'll be discussing this with him. If the option of having a pole, if you look at that area, if a pole were on the edge of the woodlands, I was at the site, and the trees don't look that tall to me, and you, my question is, number, first question is, how much higher do you think a, a pole would have to be to function at the same level as your proposed...
I would have to ask our RF engineer to answer that question.
Okay, so we can ask him that question later, and my next question would be, you already have a generator? I don't understand the difference between running a wire underground from the campanile to support the campanile, or to support a pole on the edge of the tree line. What's the difference with the generator issue there?
The generator issue is directly related to noise impacts at the property line, under the town's code.
Clarify, you have the generator right now, right near the campanile?
It's within, it's enclosed within.
It's within, right, right, right.
Which attenuates the noise.
Right. But you could, there could still be an enclosure. It doesn't have to be 50 feet tall. There could still be a generator enclosure.
Correct.
Yes, okay, that's my point.
But again, that facility would also require similar variances in terms of fall-down zone.
Well, it wouldn't be 50 feet tall, it might be four feet, five feet tall, but anyway. Okay, I'll let you continue, please.
Sure. So just to answer that question, though, a wooden pole would also need similar fall-down zone variances, just to clarify.
Depending on where it's located.
That's correct, yes.
Right.
So essentially, just to summarize everything up, this application has been before the town for quite some time. AT&amp;T has diligently pursued a review of any potential alternatives, and there have been no other viable options made available that have been identified, and we have described all of the alternative locations, including on the property, that have been reviewed in our documentation. So we respectfully submit, we want to work with the town. There's a very clear gap here, a very clear need for coverage. There is no outdoor coverage whatsoever, and AT&amp;T has undergone extensive mitigation in order to find what we respectfully submit is the least intrusive means of remedying this gap, and we would respectfully submit that issuances of the variance in the special permit is appropriate.
I have one other question.
Sure.
With, with regard to your, your components on the tower, is this, do I, am I correct that this is solely an AT&amp;T facility?
Yes, that's correct.
So therefore, with regard to the local community and EMT workers and their own personal cell phones, only those, I don't know how much this would help or not, and your expert can maybe, I know that's in the report here, but my point is, if somebody does not have AT&amp;T as a carrier, they would not have any change in their, if they're an EMT person, in their coverage.
That's true. And, well, not an EMT person, I'd like to clarify there. So yes, this is providing service to AT&amp;T customers. The gap is evaluated from AT&amp;T's perspective. That being said, AT&amp;T is the entity that is building out the first net network, which is a federal network. There's information provided in the submission. It was created by Congress in 2012 to ensure the establishment of a nationwide public safety broadband network. Each state had to opt into it. New York has opted in. It has designed, it's designed to revolutionize how first responders communicate and give them a dedicated network and a priority of service during times of emergencies, and AT&amp;T was selected as the entity that builds out the first net network, so that will benefit all first responders.
Have you, have other, other carriers requested to be a part of this, so that it's more comprehensive?
Vicki Brennan would have to answer that question, but I will submit that part of the reason why this is only AT&amp;T is the stealth nature of the facility and reducing the height. We could build a taller structure that could allow for collocators on there, but it's a balancing with the aesthetic impacts from a larger structure.
Okay. Because we approved some of this out at the Montauk Lighthouse, and it certainly did not make the structure larger, but anyway, I won't get into that right now. Okay. Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Yeah, how many sites did you look at overall before you came down to this one?
I'll let Vicki Brennan speak to that, but there are specifically, there's an analysis, in the alternatives analysis, of all the different types of structures that were looked at under the code. And then there are also four separate, specific locations that were requested by the town to evaluate as well, as alternatives, that were ruled out as well, and there's documentation in there. But I can, Vicki can speak next to the alternatives that were evaluated.
Where is the alternative analysis?
The alternatives analysis was included in the May 24th reactivation letter.
Okay.
And then in the following submissions, we reiterated the points relative to the wooden pole alternative on the site.
Okay. So where is that in your October 14th document?
So the alternative, the alternatives analysis is in the May 24th.
Yeah, I have that. Where, I have that in front of me. Which, which letter is that?
May 24th.
No, yeah, which letter in the May 24th?
Yep.
Does anyone know?
Oh, the...
The alternative analysis.
Exhibit C?
C?
Yes. In May?
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Specifically, Vicki can address the full process that was undertaken, but I know specifically in response to town questions, 472 Old Stone Highway was evaluated. It was a single-story structure that could not provide sufficient antenna height, and it had insufficient space to construct a new pole as well. Spring School is located outside of the search ring, which is part of the RF affidavit. It's the area in which AT&amp;T looks to remedy this specific gap, so it would need a significantly taller structure to meet the gap from that site. Additionally, there's 584 Acabonic Road, which is also outside of the search ring. It would need a significantly taller structure, and I believe back in 2017, an AT&amp;T RF engineer submitted an affidavit that even a 65-foot structure wouldn't be sufficient to meet AT&amp;T's gap in the area.
I'm sorry, that was three alternatives, or what was the fourth?
Yeah, and then the wooden pole alternative in multiple sites on the actual location, and then the original steeple bell tower extension, which was proposed. And then Vicki Brennan can speak to her review of the rest of the search ring area.
Okay. Let's do that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could give your name and address, please?
Sure. Victoria Brennan, 5550 Merrick Road, Suite 302, Massapequa, New York, 11758.
Great, thank you. If you could raise your right hand again, thank you. Do you swear or, and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I, just before I go into my testimony, I wanted to address one question Mr. Delene had asked in regard to the variance being granted in perpetuity. If it made the board feel better, I've been asked this question before, and AT&amp;T will agree to a removal bond, you know, where if AT&amp;T is no longer using the site, there's a bond posted to remove the campanile. Or if the campanile becomes obsolete, AT&amp;T will commit as part of the condition of approval to take it down. So those are two ways you can kind of assure that we will be using the campanile for its intended purpose, and if we don't, we can take the structure down.
When do you think it'll be obsolete?
I don't think it'll ever be obsolete.
I mean, it's, it's evolving quite quickly, isn't it? Broadband transmission is, you know, evolving quite quickly, isn't it?
You know, I, I travel everywhere, and I'm on the subways and the trains and driving, and all I see is everybody on their phones. And the cell, the cellular network is integral for safety, for communications, for people to stay connected. People use it for media now, they use it for every means, for checking work, business. And if anything, it's, it's just becoming more and more updated, and more areas like this are in need of coverage. Because I know in East Hampton, it's very tough to maintain a phone call. Even driving around the area, there's no coverage whatsoever, and especially with the residents with safety, if anything, this is just improving the quality of life.
Thank you. So going back to my question earlier, if you see the, the site behind you, the aerial, say for instance, a pole was placed directly in the center of your site, which would completely mitigate many of these, or all of these variances perhaps, how, how tall do you think that would have to be, that tower, to match the capacity of what you propose?
I think Mr. Arceo could probably address that better, but probably about 80 feet. He's the radio frequency engineer.
Okay.
Because you have to understand, inside the campanile, we have all our antennas, right, on the topmost portion. The campanile is 50 feet, and our antennas are approximately 45 feet, so they're right at the very top. And they're all effectively propagating a signal, if you will. If you have a wooden pole there, you're going to have to stagger the antennas on a vertical plane, so you're not going to quite have that signal at every level. With this area, we really wanted to keep something in keeping with the aesthetics because we know how nice this area is. It's beautiful. And, you know, in reviewing the code, you have a certain predilection towards opportunity sites, to look at poles, towers, water structures, rooftops, churches. This is one of the reasons we thought this was such a great site. It's benefiting some of the, the public at large, it's keeping with the aesthetics of the area, and it's, it's trying to blend in something that some people don't like.
Do, do you have anything to do with, what I'm getting at is, is that I know the town and people in the Springs Fire Department, the EMT, and all, they're looking for solutions. And one of them may or may not be Camp Blue Bay, in East Hampton, you probably know that site. Do you have anything to do with that? And the reason I ask is, if that site was approved and a larger tower was built, would that nullify the need for this tower that you're proposing?
I'd have to really sit with the radio frequency engineer and evaluate where the surrounding sites are, where this site is being proposed, how it offloads the signal, so I, I would not be able to say whether that would or wouldn't. And how far is that site from this site?
Well, it's, I don't know exactly, but I'm just, I'm kind of surprised that you didn't, there's been no discussion about that, with the planning board even, that for all this time, that there's been, that's never been brought up before, that, because if, if, you know, if there's a possibility on many acres of woodland to hide away a taller tower being at Camp Blue Bay, that would completely mitigate the need for any of these type things, I can't believe that you haven't looked into that, because you might want to get on board with that tower and talk to them, if that's going to happen.
Again, approximately how far as the crow flies is Camp Blue Bay?
We could pull it up on a, on a map.
Two to three miles. I mean-
So, Mike, in line with his questions, too, it's like, if you, if you're driving along the, say, the expressway, you see towers all along the expressway at certain distances, are they shared towers?
A lot of times, yes.
So why can't that happen here?
There is no surrounding site here. Our closest site is the Amagansett Fire Department, and you'll notice all the arrays, every carrier is there. When you head towards this area, there's no other carriers here, there's no coverage because of the unique character of the neighborhood, being a residential neighborhood. There's no water tanks to co-locate on, there's no existing towers. As you know, it's very tough to get cell sites approved, so it's-
What happened with the Spring School? That's, again, that seems like a lot of land and, and-
It's about 1.2 miles away. That's too far because we already have cell sites in those areas. It's like a honeycomb. So you have existing sites, and you're trying to fill in the gaps for those sites. So all the ones that were suggested to us by the board that we reviewed, Spring Street was, excuse me, the school was 1.2 miles away, Acabonic Road was like 1.4, and then the Old Market Place, you know, that's pretty close, but that's even more residential, that's not an opportunity.
But if you went up from 50 feet to 70 feet, would that mitigate that one mile distance difference?
I mean, the higher we go, it definitely helps with the coverage, for sure. I mean, if we could approve a 100-foot pole here, I think you'd have coverage, you know, in a lot of the residential area around here.
Well, okay, again, I'd like, it'd be good, maybe your expert can give us that answer later. Okay, any other questions, board?
I just wanted to know, is, would it be feasible to co-locate other carriers in the campanile structure?
Sorry. Right now, it's specifically designed for AT&amp;T. It's a multi-level campanile. We have our equipment at the bottom. Again, it's all enclosed, as our attorney had, had stated. The generator's inside, the antennas are inside, so if it were to be bigger and taller, you could definitely fit co-location, but right now, we're using almost every square inch inside the campanile.
Okay, thank you. The first net service, they said, would provide service for all first responders, is that something that the town would have to subscribe to?
It's not the town, I think it's the state, but again, the radio frequency expert can probably elaborate on it a little bit better. But like, all first responders, police, fire, and everybody, they have the opportunity to opt into the system, and I think it's supported by the government.
But at a state level?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Allen, A-L-L-E-N, and I'm a principal with Saratoga Associates, landscape architects, architects, engineers, and planners. And I'm a registered landscape architect, and I'm here to answer any questions you have concerning the design of the facility, concerning the aesthetic integration of the, the tower into the neighborhood.
Okay, great. Could you raise your hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. So, I don't have a question about the architecture of it at this point, but again, you heard my questions earlier. So do you know about the differences between this campanile at 50 feet and a separate pole at 70 feet, for example?
I would have to defer to the RF engineer on the-
No, I thought that's what, the question we were going to get answered. Okay. I have no questions for you.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you for coming, though. Board members, any questions? No?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so I thought we were getting the technical. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Neil Arceo. I'm the RF engineer. My address is 146 Winding Hill Drive, Hackettstown, New Jersey, 07840.
Okay, thank you. Would you, thank you.
Spell your last name, sir.
A-R-C-E-O.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening. So you heard my questions, I think you know where I'm going.
Yes, I do. This is regard to the wooden pole height, in case if we're going to have it erected in the, right in the back lot. The minimum height would be at least two rad centers, so that would be 70 feet, or, you know, 20 feet on top of the tree line height.
So I made a good guess. Okay, great. Now, my next question, the Camp Blue Bay, again, if, if, say, I have no idea what's being talked about, honestly, over there as far as height, but say, it is, it's many acres of woodland. Say there were a 120-foot tower up there, or a 100-foot tower. With your expertise, would that mitigate the need for this tower, if AT&amp;T were grouped onto that tower?
I have to run the simulations, I cannot tell at this point.
Yeah, okay, well, we may, I'd be, we may or may not keep the record open, but for that information. Okay, board members, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I think we'll move along now to the planning department, and then we'll get to the public comments, the public for any comments they may have.
Hey, Eric Schantz from the planning department. I haven't had time to review fully the new submission because we received it yesterday.
Yep.
However, the wetland line was last delineated in 2012. The verification expired in January, on January 19th, or January of 2019, so they need to review it, that's what I was getting at. That has to be through the planning department, not the applicant's agent, and- I'll show you the difference. So actually, zooming out here, these are the wetlands in question, you can even see them here, they're, they're part of the Barnes Hole complex, they're, they're high-quality wetlands with some protected species in them. Their line, so this is the new survey. You'll see the line is basically a straight line that's just outside of 100 feet. The original site plan and survey was closer with a jagged line there.
Can you put your finger across, run your finger on the line?
Jagged line here, and the setback was about 80 feet.
So the wetland's really straightened out there nicely, didn't it?
It has, yes. That shouldn't probably change too much. This is a D.C. wetland, they need a permit or a letter of non-jurisdiction. I don't think, based on the size of the structure and the mitigation, straw bales, project fencing, and drainage structures, that there's going to be much of an impact on that wetland. The fall zone impairment requirements are meant to protect neighbors. So I guess, yeah, that's probably best. The pyramid law variance they need, and the fall zone from the property line are-
Eric, did you move to the other side?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, he has to-
He's got the mic.
He can do the microphone.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, Deb, you'll have to-
So they're in relation to this property line, which is actually this property, but there's an easement here. So I don't think that those variances, that it's going to have much impact on that property. The real question is the double fall zone requirement for this residence. It's roughly 80 feet away, it needs to be 100, needs to be twice the height. So that's really designed to protect the residents from debris, whether it be ice or bird nests or something like that. I don't, in all honesty, I don't think there's much of a potential for that, with the trees in the way. But really, the question here is whether or not this is the minimum necessary. I don't see how it would be an issue to relocate to the woods and increase maybe to 70 feet in height on a utility pole. We have such a facility on Napig Meadow Road, we have one at Blue Bay currently that's 60 feet. You need to decide if the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighbor, specifically the most impacted neighbor, as well as the community. But really, the fall zone situation is really for that neighbor, not community character. So the benefit to the applicant is a financial benefit. It would improve cell service as a community benefit, but there's only one carrier, and I think they could relocate on-site and still have a wireless facility here. Doing so would reduce the number and scale of the variances. And just in general, I think it's a bad precedent with wireless applications to be granting variances for putting them near residential property lines within the required fall zone areas. So that's really what I think, is that there's a more appropriate location here, centrally located. I understand the issue with the generator, they could put a cover over it. There's screening options that, you know, there are available, fencing, plantings. And I think that that would be a lot less visible than this 50-foot-tall bell tower. Basically, when you have a utility pole, you usually don't see the base of it, or the, you know what I mean? Most of the height because it's narrow and within the trees. The issue is that if it's up over the trees from afar distance, you can see it over the tree line. In this case, everybody driving down the road is going to see this structure. That doesn't relate to the fall zone, but, you know, I think that is something that should be considered, because it, it looks like, you know, it's been designed in a convenient location for, for access, but I, I still think that there are other options, not only in the surrounding area, but on this property. And I think-
Eric, oh, I'm sorry, just before you move along, I'm looking at a small copy of the survey, but to that point, as far as if, if a pole were mounted in the center of the lot, the lot, as I can read, is 173 feet.
Yeah, the lot, the lot is very small, which is-
No, but still, it's still 173 by 150, basically, 148, 149.
Yeah.
So basically, if a 70-foot, if a 70-foot pole were mounted, it seems that would not need any of the fall zone variances.
They, I think they would still need, the way I look at it, and I scaled it out, it depends on where you put it, obviously, but if you put it smack dab in the center, they would still need a variance for the doubled fall zone requirement, simply because of the size of the lot.
Right.
It would obviate the need for the wetland variance, the natural resources special permit, the pyramid law variance, and the property line setback variance.
Right.
So you would be down to one variance, as opposed to an NRSP and four variances.
Right.
And that one variance would be the fall zone?
Uh, the double fall zone.
The double fall zone.
For residents or yard within the-
So kind of point back to the area that you suggested that it could be put-
Basically, this general area.
Right there.
And I do have some photos here. I mean, they're not the best because you're just looking into the woods, but-
And that would alleviate the fall zone issue for that house, for the neighboring house?
Well, it would eli, it would eliminate the fall zone, the height being within the property line. It wouldn't eliminate the doubled setback that's required for, between the residence or place where people congregate.
I also wonder, I know Eric, you and I aren't experts on this, but with this equipment in a 50-foot campanile, 50-foot tall campanile, I really don't understand why that being moved over 70 feet would make a difference, because the same surrounding trees are still there. So that kind of perplexes me a little bit.
Yeah, I, I mean, I assume that what it is, is that there's, by virtue of the fact of having that 10-foot by 10-foot structure, there's enough of a separation from the surrounding trees that-
Or as the applicant attorney noted, the stacking, there may have to be a little bit of stacking to get that.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, too, because they'd have to do one, one panel antenna below the other, so it, it reduces the overall effectiveness of it.
Eric, can you tell me from a townwide perspective, and being in front of the planning board and planning department, is it a smart idea for, for a plan, good planning practice to approve non-consolidated towers in, within the town?
Sometimes.
I mean, every transmission line, everything, everybody shares everything.
Yeah.
You know, so-
You're saying a site that doesn't have all the main carriers?
Yeah, because another, another carrier can come to us and ask for something similar to another location, is that not right?
Yeah, I mean, with Home Sweet Home-
From a town planning-wide, is it smart planning?
Yeah, I mean, at Home Sweet Home in Wayne Scott, they got a, one carrier got approval to put a cupola on top of the building, and then another carrier came in and said, oh, well, you approved them for a cupola, we're going to do another one. So now there's two, you know, there could be two cupolas, which doesn't really look that great. I mean, you know, that's a matter of opinion somewhat, but they said, they used the argument of, we're asking for the exact same thing that the other carrier asked for, and that weighs heavily. As far as, is that good planning? I don't think so. I think that, well, our code, our wireless code is strange in that it calls for, it doesn't actually recommend co-location, putting all the carriers together. It really calls for low inconspicuous facilities that are mounted, ideally unlike utility poles or monopoles, within tree masses, things of that sort, but not, the whole idea being to not have something like what's right outside here, a big lattice tower that has every carrier on it with, you know, arms stretching out. So it, it makes sense, if you're going to build a tall tower, you know, or if there's a need for it, it makes sense in a practical, in looking at it practically, to put all the carriers there, but technically, the town code doesn't support that. that are mounted ideally on like utility poles or monopoles, within tree masses, things of that sort. But not, the whole idea being to not have something like what's right outside here, a big lattice tower that has every carrier on it with, you know, arms stretching out. So it makes sense, if you're going to build a tall tower, you know, or if there's a need for it, it makes sense in a practical, in looking at it practically, to put all the carriers there. But technically, the town code doesn't support that. The idea is to do numerous small-scale facilities that are hidden, you know, in, hidden in wooded areas or on existing buildings scattered throughout the town. Obviously, the carriers don't want to do that. They want to build one big tall tower, and you know what I mean? It makes it more efficient and easier to provide service, which we have, obviously, numerous towers like that. But our wireless code doesn't call for consolidating everybody and in fact actually recommends against it. Not in the sense that if you have a site that's good, that you couldn't have multiple utility poles or something like that, but then, you know, there's not very many sites where that would really look good. I mean, something like Camp Blue Bay where you have that 60-foot-tall pole that's just for Verizon, it's, you know, back shielded. You could probably put, you know, more facilities there. Obviously, there is a current application to put 150-foot-tall tower there that would hold all of the carriers. But yeah, the way the code is worded, it actually discourages setting something up where all the carriers could go. But there are, just, I'm winding down, there are situations where that makes sense practically.
Do you know the rationale as to why it was...
Well, because the whole idea is to prevent something like this from popping up all over town, the big lattice tower of 150 feet, you know, that usually has arm arrays for all the panel antennas. It's big, it's conspicuous. The idea was to spread throughout the town many smaller facilities. In fact, the code really likes utility pole-mounted facilities. It makes them the lowest intensity. There's tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. That's tier three. That's the lowest intensity. It's in fact almost a rubber stamp from the Planning Department, as it's worded in the code. We have not received one tier-three application since the wireless plan was adopted in 2001. So it's not something carriers like to do, but...
You know, I was going to say, many years ago, Eric, when I was, you know, a planner with the Planning Department, I, some of those files were happening, and that's what we were approving, and on utility poles, and they were very small. And I was just going to ask you about the feasibility of that technology. Is that still...
Yeah. I mean, they call them small...
An option. Is that an option?
It is. But that's more, you see that more common where you have a population density that can support it. We don't really have that. So usually, you see those kind of things spread throughout cities. You know, it's certain, it's an option, and it's what our code encourages, but it's not something, you know, if I'm looking at it from a cell carrier's perspective, it's not something that I want to be doing, simply because, you know, if you're, you know, you'd need so many of them to cover, you know, your customers.
Can you shed some light on the reasons the Planning Board could not come to consensus?
Some of the members felt that this site was inappropriate in principle because of the existence of the chapel building, because of its, you know, relatively small size, because of the existing setting. They felt that it detracted from the existing aesthetic. That was the main argument against it. I believe the members that were, and I can't quote them exactly, but I believe the members that did not have an issue with the application felt that they worked with the applicants over a long period of time, that they came up with the best design. It's something that the ARB didn't object to. In fact, as stated, it's true, one of the members recommended this design. So I think that's where they were coming from on both sides. I think some people felt the site was not appropriate in principle because of the historic setting. It's not a historic landmark, but it is a historic building. And then some felt that they'd come up with a good compromise and a good solution.
So if we suggested a different location, that would have to go back to the ARB again, too?
It has to go back to the ARB and the Planning Board already.
No matter what.
And if you do grant the requested relief, then it'll go back to the Planning Board for a public hearing. We'll also prepare an NEAF for them. But again, the last it was left, in fact, that's why the applicants asked to suspend the application, was that there wasn't a consensus among the board members. The Planning Board members have changed since then, some of them. But the chairman basically said, you know, "You don't have a vote. You don't have the vote. So what do you want to do? Do we want to move this forward, or do you want to discuss maybe changing something?" And they said, "Well," and in fact, it was different counsel at the time, said, "No, we'll hold off. We'll talk to AT&amp;T. We'll see what we want to do." But obviously, they've come back and they've, you know, restarted the application. But I just wanted to show you again about the wooded area and that option. So this is looking south along Old Stone Highway at the church. That's obviously the massive trees that's to the south of the churches, I should say chapel. So this is from, so from this walkway, the ramp up to the side. Getting a little, a little closer. Obviously, you can't see much because it's pretty dense woods. But it is, you know, a pretty concealed area. You could come in from around the back with minimal disturbance. Obviously, it is going to require clearing, which is unfortunate, but, you know, the pros and cons of conceal, better concealing the facility need to be weighed in that respect.
Is this an area where the white pine beetle has...
I don't think so, no.
...expressed itself?
It's mostly deciduous back in there also, nearly 100%. So this is actually, one thing I wanted to mention, too. I'm not sure exactly what the outlet is, whether it's for the gutters of the chapel or something in the basement, like a washing machine or something like that. Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. But you see this area here, this dirt area? There's a pipe, an outlet pipe here that is basically directed towards that neighbor to the east. So as part of providing drainage control and gutters and leaders for the bell tower, I think it would be, well, I'm not sure the nexus for the existing building, but they are asking for a natural resources special permit. But you might want to ask the applicants what that is and if they can better improve the drainage control on the chapel itself. Shouldn't be difficult to do. It's a small building. And if they are putting drainage in for the bell tower, they could probably, it probably wouldn't even really affect the size of the ring that they're, you know, that they'd be needing to install. So I just want to see if there's anything else here that I wanted to show you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
When did the idea for campanile emerge?
After the initial submission, which was to change the existing steeple. Basically, the ARB and the Planning Board both said they didn't like it. And the applicants worked with the ARB and the Planning Board to consider alternatives. I believe it was my initial evaluation that I recommended that they consider a utility pole off in the woods, basically what I'm saying now. And they submitted that in a visual rendering of what that might look like. And then also in their conversations with the ARB, the ARB recommended that they consider the bell tower, campanile, campanile, whatever you want to call it.
So you're saying the ARB didn't favor the utility pole in the woods?
Um, they did not.
For aesthetic reasons?
Yeah, they did not. And neither did the Planning Board. The Planning Board basically set, asked, they told the applicants to move forward with the bell tower idea and just with some twerks and get the ARB to like it. Because the application was, you know, sort of drawn out, just because of the time of the submissions and these conversations and getting in front of the different boards, the board members kind of, some of them, you know, looked at it further and said, you know, "We don't think that this property, because of the church and, you know, the historic nature of it, we don't think that it's even an appropriate site." That's where really the whole idea of alternative locations in the area came up. The applicants brought up the possibility of the market down here on the corner, which obviously, that's an even more constrained parcel, so that's not really viable. And they have submitted their, as they said, their record of looking at other properties, which, you know...
So just so I'm clear, the Planning Board, even though they had encouraged the design of the bell tower, came back and wanted alternative locations, not the ARB?
Not really. There was never, there's never been a consensus of the Planning Board that the bell tower is the best idea or something that they're, they're going to approve.
And just...
But the, really, that idea of the bell tower really came from the ARB. And the Planning Board during, you know, during the course of its review and looking at alternatives, you know, they kind of looked at it and said...
Just to summarize, they encouraged looking at other alternatives?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, this chapel is not within the historic district of the Springs?
It is not. Springs Historic District is up by Pollock-Krasner.
And it's not...
It's also not a historic landmark.
Right, okay.
It is historic in the colloquial sense.
It's an old building.
Yeah. But it's not a designated historic landmark. That's correct.
And are we all aware that the, the power line coming in is going to be overhead?
I don't know. That's something to consider. I wouldn't think so.
It says in the survey.
Okay, all right. Yeah, usually, even with site plans, we require that all utility lines be buried. It's usually a standard condition, and I don't see that, that there wouldn't be a reason they could do that.
And you brought up drainage, and I don't see drainage on the survey as well.
Yeah, I'm recommending that that be required as mitigation for the NRSP and the wetland variance that's being requested.
Okay, well... And if there was a tower in the woods, the pole in the woods, that could also be made aesthetically pleasing, not just be a metal pole.
I think so. The rendering that they submitted really was, you know, not attractive, I'll be honest. I mean, obviously, that's a matter of opinion. But I mean, we have num, you know, we have a couple of facilities that are essentially utility pole-mounted facilities that if you didn't know they were there, you wouldn't see them. And the difference is, you'd need to be far away to see something sticking up over the trees because you'd need to have the angle to look at the treetops. If you're driving by on Old Stone Highway and there's a, you know, utility pole here, a brown wooden utility pole in a bunch of trees that's maybe, you know, that much around, you're really not going to see it. It's from a distance that you'd see it over the treetops. You're definitely going to see the bell tower. But again, that's not really what this board is here for. They're asking for fall zone variances.
Right.
So it's the issue of whether or not the location of the tower present, presents a detriment to neighboring properties.
Yes, exactly.
And again, with your standards, whether or not there are viable alternatives that can mitigate the number and scale of variances needed, and whether or not it's the minimum necessary. And I, I respect what they submitted and their engineer's credentials, but I don't see how that's not possible. We have similar facilities in town, and they've made it work. So, you know.
Well, thank you very much, Eric, for your work on this over the years. Any other questions for Eric, board members?
No.
No? Okay, thanks, Eric. And we'll grab you if we need you. Okay, now we will open it up to the public.
Three minutes.
Deb, you first. And again, three minutes, and unless you're an attorney, give us your name and address, and we'll swear you in. Good evening, Deb.
Do you think I would take over three minutes?
You'll have to pull that mic...
Deborah Foster?
Yep. Thanks, Deb. You'll probably have to pull that mic real close to you as well. Thank you.
I'm losing up my time?
No, you're not. But you have to give us your address, and then you're good.
Okay. At Woodcock Lane.
Okay, great. Now we'll do that. Thank you, Deb. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening.
I've served on the town board. Is that up there? I've served on the Planning Board for 15 years, AID's chair. Both, in both positions, I was the point person updating the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. This has been a painful application for everybody. And it's the reason, when I was on the board in 2005, that we put in our code special permit requirements. Now, you guys don't deal with special permits particularly. It's mainly just the variances.
And we do natural resources special permits. You know that. We do the natural resources.
That do, and I'm going to talk to that as a variant. There's at least five of those that they do not meet. And the law says if there's two or more, that you can say no. If there's a problem, it's with my friends on the Planning Board, because they just keep asking for more and more and more, and they don't want to say no. So they send it off to the ARB. They've dumped it on you, and they should put everyone out of, you know, the misery and the cost of this. If you approve this, or if it gets approved, it would be possible to have a 50-plus cell tower in a residential neighborhood of B-Locks. This one's even smaller than half an acre. That it's not historic, but it's beautiful, and I urge you to drive by it. It was called Eastside in the old days. And you got bonkers and bobbies and locals that can afford to live there. The woman that might have this fall on her new extension to her home is retired. She came out here from New York, loved it, like a lot of our full-time people, spent a lot of money on the extension. It's beautiful. Unfortunately, it was extended toward exactly where the cell tower is going to be. And I looked this up once. Any board better be careful if they give variances to a fall zone, because there is history out there of a person that was killed, and it was a school. That's why Springs School said no. Big playground, but still, it fell. It was near a basketball court, and just about bankrupt the whole school district. I don't think you should be able to give a variant on a fall zone. And I think the Planning Board should say no. It's all there. Why else would it take five years? Come on, guys. It's a, it's a big utility that should not be there. It's only covering 500...
Time's up.
500 feet? That's me?
That's you, yeah.
But I just want to say, as a stockholder, I have another place that's perfect, and you'll still be covered.
Okay, Deb, that's enough.
You have to address us. That's all right. But thank you, Deb, for coming out. Thank you. Is there someone else who would like to speak this evening in the public? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Coster, and I live at 463 Old Stone Highway in East Hampton.
Great. Did you get her spelling, Denise?
I know her very well.
Okay, good evening. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board. On behalf of Karen Simon and myself, property owners of 463 Old Stone Highway, thank you for your time and consideration as it relates to the application before you. The fall line variance sought is substantial, not de minimis by any standard. It would result in the required setback being little over half of what is legally required. Besides, the setback requirement is not like normal zoning setback requirements, for example, front or side yard setbacks, height and coverage limitations for design, privacy, and general aesthetic considerations. Rather, the cell phone tower setback requirements are predicated on health and safety considerations based on scientific engineering, based on scientific engineering considerations and anecdotal risk experience. They are intended to protect adjoining owners like us from the obvious potential hazards of high overhanging structures of the proposed nature affecting properties directly in the fall line, us. The intent of the cell tower construction standards is not to enable one neighbor to profit from cell tower license fees at the expense of another neighbor's safety. Multiple viable alternatives exist, both onsite, as recommended by the Planning Technical Analysis Mem, and possibly offsite on other town-owned properties. Furthermore, if the property owner is enamored with the campanile design, then possibly consider locating it frontal or to the south on the applicant property, not frontal to ours, which falls in the fall zone. The proposed cell tower is totally inconsistent with the nature and the character and the subject of this residential neighborhood. Imagine what it would be like driving down and seeing a shiny cellphone tower in the bucolic Springs District. There is no cognizable hardship necessitating the variance sought. The applicant cell company has other alternatives, and the property owner does not need the tower for cell service. This is not a case where a neighbor seeks a yard setback variance in order to construct a pool or a tennis court to enhance the use and the enjoyment of the applicant's property. to enhance the use and the enjoyment of the applicant's property. The variance sought here is strictly for revenue-raising purposes for both entities. Therefore, if there's any hardship as such, it's entirely a disqualifying, self-created hardship. In conclusion, the multiplicity and the nature of the requested exceptions gobble the rules. At some point, if you grant the requested variances, you may as well throw away the zoning ordinances. The variances sought do not meet the applicable legal balancing test because the potential detriment to us as the adjoining neighbor and the surrounding neighborhood at large far outweighs any benefit to the applicant. Therefore, it should be resolutely denied. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes. Sorry.
The planning board had mentioned placing it in the wooded lot. Would you have a similar objection if the tower was in the wooded lot?
I am, we, I should speak for us. We are not sitting here trying to object to something that we believe is going to benefit the community. I think what's been said here, too, is that the community that it's benefiting is really a very small percentage. It's AT&amp;T customers alone. Would we object to it? We're not going to object to what the planning department and what the zoning board obviously approves. They spend a lot of time and energy looking at this. That's really not what it's about.
Can I ask? Go ahead.
The reason I'm asking is, in the wooded lot, it would also require a fall zone variant.
I can't speak to that because I don't.
Yeah, she's not the applicant. She's a neighbor.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, it's just.
She's a neighbor of the property.
I mean, I guess I don't see how putting it anywhere there, it doesn't affect the fall zone of somebody, whether it's the property owners across the street, whether it's the property owners directly to the south of the church, or across the street. I don't, you know, I'm not pervy to all of that, but I'm not quite sure where you put it where it doesn't affect a fall zone.
Okay, just moving along. A quick question before you leave. Where is your house located exactly? Did I miss that?
I'm directly behind the.
You're the one that's closest to the Caponile?
Correct.
Okay, just to make sure for the record.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Did I see a hand? I think I saw one in the back there. Oh, right there. Yes, sir. No, yes, but you have to come up. Yeah, sure. Sure, you all can speak. Yeah, no, you're good. Yep, thank you.
My name is William Drer. I'm a resident of 30 Huckleberry Lane in East Hampton.
Thank you. How do you spell your last name, sir? Thank you. Are you an attorney?
Just again, I'm sorry.
D-R-E-H-E-R. I'm sorry.
Your address again?
30 Huckleberry Lane, East Hampton.
Okay, great, and I'll swear you.
North Dakota State.
I will swear you in now. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good evening. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I'm speaking in several capacities, and one of which is highly personal. 19 years ago, this past month, my wife and I were married in St. Peter's Chapel.
Good for you.
And if it wouldn't compromise the board, we would like to invite you to our 20th wedding anniversary party. I've been a resident of East Hampton since 1968. I've been a senior warden of St. Luke's Church, which is responsible for and legally the owner of St. Peter's Chapel. We feel deeply about its availability. It's not anywhere near as frequently used as we would like it to be, but we feel it's an essential part of the cultural heritage of the community, and we are eager to have it maintained in its shape and with the variances which are being requested. We believe it will make it feasible for us, even though we are already a successful parish within the diocese of Long Island thanks to the success of our rector, Dennis Brunel, who's in the audience. So I petition you, on behalf of St. Luke's Church, to accede to this. We are not trying to take advantage of a revenue opportunity as such. We believe it benefits the community. It's part of our own devotion to community service, and we have supported AT&amp;T's application. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out this evening. Yes, I see someone in the back was for, no, this, the gentleman in the back row. Oh, well, she was up first. Go ahead. Come on, yep. And if anyone else wishes to speak, they can kind of get ready and kind of get ready to come up, okay? So we can move along here. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not a lawyer. Michelle Riggi, 15 Shore Ridge, Barnes Landing, East Hampton.
Thank you.
I-2 available.
Hold on one second, please. Do you have a spelling for the last name, please?
I was just going to ask.
Yep.
I do.
Please, your spelling.
Pardon me?
If you could spell your last name.
R-I-G-G-I.
Good. We need it for the record. Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, good evening.
Good evening. Something was said earlier by a previous speaker that very few people would benefit from the cell tower because it's only AT&amp;T. I don't believe I'm an AT&amp;T member, but everybody gets to use 911. I laid on the cold ground Christmas Eve, 2016, with my cellphone in my hand, outside, unable to reach help.
Sorry to hear that.
Because of no cell service. And when I told the same thing to the other board, they said, "Saving lives is not part of our concern."
That was a pretty nice.
But that was a different board. And this tower will not just help AT&amp;T people. It will help the EMS, the police, and the fire department. And as far as what the Caponile looks like, whether people like it or don't like it, it was the board that said they weren't in the business of saving lives who had AT&amp;T design it at their request, redesign it, and redesign it, and redesign it. So I would like you to take all of that into consideration as you're making your decisions. And before the people that spoke earlier, the people who live right behind the chapel, the previous owner to that property was really in favor of the cell tower. I believe her name was Mrs. Washburn. And she was in the favor of it for the same reason, 911. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Liz? Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lisbeth Marigold, L-Y-S-P-E-T-H, Marigold, like the flower. 86 David's Lane, East Hampton, New York, 11937.
I'll swear you in, unless you're an attorney, Liz. Thanks. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
I have two hats, one on the chair of the East Hampton Village Zoning Board. And we have had cell tower applications. Where we, one next to the middle school, where we were told that we should grant it, that there was no reason not to, except for a noise, where they put a noise barrier around it. And other than that, that it's perfectly safe. That it's been proven by the federal government, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think it should be worried as to safety. The other thing is, I'm the historian of St. Luke's Church. And of course, I love St. Peters. I serve as the Eucharist minister there in the summer. And it is not a historic building, but everybody does love the charming little chapel. It has been added on to, it was given to the community by the Millers. Years later, it was added on to, 14 feet wide and 14 feet in length. Then they added a kitchen, then they added another room, then they added a walkway. So, I mean, it isn't historic in any way. But one of the things St. Luke's wants to do, and if they have the money in St. Peters to do it, is to make it more community-based the way it used to. People that grew up here years ago were picked up at school by a yellow bus. I don't know if any of you remember the yellow bus. But it went from the different schools, and they brought them to St. Peter's Chapel, where 30, 40, 50 kids would sit in the chapel, and they would have not only Bible instruction, but sort of society instruction. And we would like that back again. There used to be Boy Scout meetings, Girl Scout meetings, AA meetings, et cetera. For that reason alone, we think that St. Peters needs to be able to call 911 today. Or if there's a small fire, to call the fire department or the police department. The more people that are in there, the more people have the need to be able to reach out for emergency services. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Any questions?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Brunel, Dennis with one N, Brunel, B-R-U-N-E-L-L-E. I'm the rector of St. Luke's and St. Peters.
I guess unfortunately, even though I believe you, I think I still have to swear you in. Counsel? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth? I can say so, help you, God.
Yes, you may. Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Some of the historical perspective, I think, is important. I appreciate what our neighbors to the back have said. I remember when they came and petitioned me not to raise any objections to their expanding their property, their building even closer to the property line, which I did not do out of consideration for them. But historically, St. Peter's Chapel was taken over by St. Luke's in 1903 as a chapel. And as we had several other chapels at the time, whether that was up on Three Mile Harbor Road, or Montauk, or Responsibility for St. Thomas's in Amagansett, it was always with the proviso that the chapel, all chapels, had to maintain themselves. That St. Luke's would not be there to underwrite all the expenses. St. Matthews was sold to Calvary Baptist Church. The chapel in Montauk was gone after a season. St. Thomas's is kind of waning right now. And St. Peter's Chapel is in need of money. You're right. We need income. You're right. Otherwise, the chapel will cease. I don't want to be the priest that's going to be in charge when that happens. The $3,000 a month that we would get would help us maintain the chapel, would help us make it more year-round, would help us make it more beneficial to the community year-round. It used to be year-round. I'm going to say at least 20 years ago, it was made into a summer chapel because they could no longer afford the heating, the electricity, and all of that stuff. I'm trying in some way to find ways to keep what is really a spiritual center in Springs going. This was not something we sought. They sought us. It would have been against any fiduciary responsibility that I have as the rector or pastor not to at least explore the possibility. With the planning board, the first planning board was pretty much in favor. Then there was a change, and then the support kept going down and going down. Though they were the ones that pushed this design. I will tell you, our board, our vestry, is in favor of that design. Would we probably entertain a poll? Probably. But this looked to us the best way of integrating and containing the noise so that the neighbors in the back, who built out towards the property line even more, would not be, in a way, bothered by the noise. So I just want that perspective to be known, that it's been a task for us for almost five years now, watching dilly-dally back and forth. And AT&amp;T, I'm here to support them as much as I can because I'm trying to save my chapel for it to continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anyone else this evening? Okay, great. Well, before we close, I'd like to thank you all for coming out and participating. We appreciate that.
Why do we haven't talked about any submissions? I don't think, I don't know if anything came up.
Yeah.
The submission we got yesterday.
I think.
I think we should reserve.
I think the chairman laid out what the zoning board might do once we review the submittals, whether or not we will have another.
Right, and. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. I was going to say to counsel, I believe we can close the public hearing portion of the public comment portion of the hearing.
We can close the public hearing with the right to reopen it and renotice it. It would be renoticed, not just put back on an agenda. But if there was a need, there were any issues raised in the additional submissions or by the actual line, wetland line, if that became an issue that the board needed another public hearing on and give everyone an opportunity to be heard, then the public hearing could be reopened with additional notice.
Are we then leaving the public record open?
There's no reason to leave the public record open at this point, unless it's an issue.
I think we have it in the record.
Well, the wetland line, did you want an answer on the wetlands?
I think the issue is the wetlands, and Eric, why don't you jump up here for a sec? It seems to me that if there's a variance to the wetlands, and we don't have a proper wetland, we either base it on what we know was flagged. Go ahead, Eric, if you want to comment on that.
I know that's an issue that arose in the new submission.
Yeah.
But I haven't had time, because we just got it yesterday, to go through the entire thing and see if there's anything else that I need to let the board know about. So I, without having the time and being able to look at it thoroughly, I can't really answer the question if there's other issues. But the wetland issue is certainly something that should be corrected. In fact, it speaks to the relief that's needed.
Exactly. So I think we should do that.
Requested is using the town's wetland line. That's the relief that was requested.
Exactly, and we don't.
It should be updated.
It should be updated as well. So I agree. We leave it, counsel, we'll leave it open for that. We'd like Eric to go through the memo, and perhaps Eric could even draft a brief memo to this board on the pertinent, the salient issues that are in the updated, what was received yesterday. And as counsel says, we reserve the right to open it up and continue it at another time, and it would be renoticed.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Board members?
What are we leaving open? Because if we're closing, we talked about closing the hearing and the record, or are we leaving the record open?
We're just leaving the public.
Leaving the record open for a analysis of the, for a clarification of where the wetland line is so that we know what the relief.
How much time do we need for that?
Well, the applicants will need to apply for a new wetland flagging. We usually say that that takes anywheres from four to six weeks to complete. So, but that needs to be done. We need to have an updated wetland.
We almost have to leave it open indefinitely? Is that it?
I think we do, but we can close the public hearing. We don't have to have, we hear this. We've heard it all. It's all written record.
And in the interim, if there's anything else in that report that needs addressing, I will write it up, and you can address it at work, so.
Right, and we will reserve the right to request that information, et cetera. And that would be great, Eric. Thank you.
What's the current wetland variance that was requested?
I believe.
It's right here. It's 76 feet.
76.
Yeah.
76 variance?
I mean, a variance of 24 feet is required.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
With the Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, but leave the record open indefinitely for information on delineation of wetlands. For New Singular Wireless LLC, Suffolk Tax Map Number 300-084-0103.1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Okay, thank you all for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. We'll take like a couple of five-minute break, board, while the room kind of clears out, okay? out, okay? We need that to be blinking, do you think, or?
No, it doesn't blink.
Oh, we're live?
I would go-
Okay.
I would go ahead.
Okay. Okay, we will, we will, we're back in session now, and board member, Doolin, you have a motion to make, I believe?
Yep. Regarding, Mr. Chairman, regarding the previous application, two things. The applicant came to us and wanted to, they referenced a real estate report, and they did not hand it in. We closed the record, they did not have a chance, so I'm going to open up the record. I also listed the wrong tax map number, so I'll correct it in my motion.
Okay.
So, I want to make a motion to open the record for New Singular Wireless Suffolk Tax Map number 300-103-06-24, to receive the real estate report for the, from the applicant.
Second. Concur.
And I concur. Thank you.
For Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to close the public record for New Singular Wireless LLC, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-103-06-24.
Well, closing the public hearing, closing the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah. And a second?
Second to the hearing.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Thank you, Roy. Okay. Moving on. The next application, the applicant is Nicholas Greco. Lot size and location, 20,223 square feet total at 117 Bayview Avenue, Hollymere number 316, lots 40 to 52, Amagansett, tax map number 300-84-1-3.1. Description is, this is not applicable, this is, the relief sought here is an appeal of the principal building inspector pursuant to 255-8-30A1 of the town code. Appellant seeks to challenge a determination that the property is ineligible for the issuance of a new building permit that would allow a GeoCube seawall to remain on the property longer than nine months, limitation contained in 255-4-29. This is in an A resident zone, the flood zone here is AE flood zone elevation 10, the Sukka class is type 2. And, okay, we don't need any field reports, we all know this property very well, board members, so we'll hear from the applicant's agent. Good evening, Richard.
Okay, good evening, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Richard Whalen, I'm the attorney for the applicants, both of whom are here tonight, Nicholas Greco and Diana Heinst, and they are accompanied by Aram Tchernian, who is the president of First Coastal Corp. I do at some point, I'm just going to, later on, I have a little 14-second video, that if I can operate this correctly, I'll show you.
Video?
I think appropriate.
You're getting pretty techie, techie.
I know, high-tech now, so. This is an appeal from a determination or a decision of the building inspector. The appeal concerns the proper interpretation of Town Code Section 255-4-29, which concerns emergency activities. 255-4-29 allows the building inspector to approve certain emergency activities, which include the installation of geotextile tube or sandbag systems to limit flooding or erosion damage in specified circumstances. Our position is that when the emergency still exists, and I will assert that on this property it does still exist, and the owner is taking reasonable steps to abate the emergency, the town zoning code allows the building inspector to issue a new emergency building permit, even after a prior permit and extension of the prior permit that lasted for nine months. Therefore, we believe the building inspector acted in error when she failed to issue a new emergency activity permit under 255-4-29. The code standard for emergency activities is that these activities must be designed to protect buildings or structures from major structural damage, if those buildings or structures are in imminent peril of incurring such damage due to flooding, flooding or erosion. In approving an emergency activity, the building inspector must find pursuant to Section 255-429B, one, that the proposed activity, the proposed action is a permissible activity; second, that it can be carried out in a manner which will cause the least adverse effect on the public welfare, public welfare, environmental resources, systems, and the like; three, where applicable, the building inspector would consult with the town trustees; and fourth, finally, she must find that the building, the structure in question is in imminent peril of incurring major structural damage due to flooding or erosion, which the activity is designed to protect. So, on the subject property, which the chairman has stated the board is familiar with, the applicants have a two-story house that was built in about 1978. Mr. Greco, one of the owners today, actually helped his father build the house. The house was originally built by his father, and has been in the family, in the Greco family, since its construction. Aerial photographs showed up between about 1984 and 2016, there were some 165 feet of recession in the shoreline directly north of the house. I don't have to say that's a relatively rapid rate of erosion, probably one of the fastest rates of erosion on any shoreline in the town of East Hampton. By April of 2018, when the emergency building permit, the emergency activity permit was sought, the deck was about a foot or two from the edge of the eroding sand bluff. Clearly, the applicant made this demonstration that there was a major structural component to the house, i.e. the deck, that was in imminent peril of major structural damage. And the building department essentially implicitly agreed that the standards were met, because the building department issued an emergency permit on April 17, 2018, and later on, they did extend that permit pursuant to 255-4-29. The GeoCubes have worked, and I'm now going to try to show you very quickly, a very brief video in storm conditions. Let me see if I can get this to work.
Should we put the lights out?
No, I don't think so.
It's all to your right.
We'll have to get the mouse over there.
The mouse is all the way up there, top.
Where is it?
It's evading us.
I hope your video's better.
And what date was that taken?
That was taken on only a little over a month ago, that was October 12 of this year, October 12, 2019. And what it really is intended to demonstrate was that at a high tide, and not a particularly strong storm, I don't know how close you watch, but there really weren't very severe whitecaps out there, the wave action was right up against the GeoCubes.
Those were pretty severe waves. At the end of that video, when you looked to the west, what was that we were seeing? Can you stop it?
Well, that's the point of land, that's the point of land.
No, not that point of land, if you can go back, it, it almost looked like an old bulkhead below it or something.
That was maximized.
At the bottom, at the bottom of the GeoCubes, you guys see that? At the bottom of the GeoCubes, it looked like some dark-
I'll do it.
I'm just curious, at the end-
That's looking east.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, Eric. Here's what I want to see. At the very bottom, right there.
That's the natural shoreline, that's the natural shoreline.
No, I'm talking, not talking, I'm talking about, it just looked like there was something that structured below at the very bottom, I'm talking about, see that, right there, right there?
That's the GeoCubes. That's, that's part of the GeoCubes.
Why are they black?
Because they're uncovered.
They're white, full of sand.
That's the top of the, that's the top, I think.
Really? That's not the top of the GeoCubes, the top of the- It's filter fabric? Okay, thanks, thanks, okay, that makes sense, okay. All right, that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the GeoCubes have worked. I mean, the evidence there is that if the GeoCubes were not there, the, certainly the deck would not be there today. So, what the applicant did is to make a new application through First Coastal. On June 3 of 2019, GeoFirst Coastal came in after the prior permit had expired, and made a completely new application submission for a new erosion, a new emergency activity permit. The details of that application is set forth in our, in our appeal papers, I don't have to reiterate those. The building inspector effectively denied the application, she actually did not respond. The people, the individual who went to submit the application was handed back the application, returned to their office, and then First Coastal then had to FedEx it to the building department. The code does require, 255-4-29C requires, that a determination on an application for an emergency activity has to be either approved, meaning issued, within five days, or denied in writing within five days. No denial within five days was forthcoming. We are obviously treating this as a denial. The emergency still exists, we have that video, you will hear testimony from Aram Tchernian. No one can reasonably dispute that in the absence of the GeoCubes, the property would be in danger of major structural failure. So, the only question really is whether the building department is precluded from issuing the permit again. And our presumption, and maybe we'll hear more about that tonight, is that the building inspector is reading the code, 255-429, to say that she is only allowed, or the building inspector is only allowed, a single permit issuance for six months, and one renewal permit for three months. Our position is that there is nothing in the code that prohibits a completely new application, and if the emergency is still there, the building inspector has the power to restart the process and issue a new emergency authorization.
Isn't there a provision in the code, when that time is up, it needs to be removed?
There is, but there's nothing that says you can't apply again. And the, that's our position, that you can apply again.
What was the date the building permit was, the building permit expired?
June, on our, we believe on June 1, 2019. So, we applied two days later. We made a new application two days later. I will note that the New York State DEC has issued a permit for the same GeoCubes, their permit is valid for five years.
There's a requirement on that to replenish the sand, is that not?
There is, there is such a requirement.
Has that been done?
It had been, I believe, early in the process, right now, it has not been replenished recently. The, the applicants, the applicants, the other element, I think, of this is that in order for the emergency, apart from the emergency existing, obviously, there needs to be some good-faith attempt by the owner of the property, efforts to abate the emergency. You can't just sit there with what's intended to be an emergency structure and just let it continue that way. The owners of the property, as you know, did make an application to relocate their house, actually build a new house in more conforming location. That application was submitted in 2017. It finally came on the board's calendar a short time ago, in 2019. The board denied the application. We will tell you that we accept the denial of the board's- We will tell you that we accept the denial of the board's, of the board's, we accept the board's decision. We will be revising our house plans, and we're going to resubmit as soon as possible with plans that we hope will be, the board will find more acceptable. That's our intention. We are still intending to move the house to more landward location, and at that time, the emergency would cease to exist and the GeoCubes would be removed. Basically, that's my, that's my point, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Any questions, board members?
No.
No? Okay, thanks, Rick. Okay, now, we have the building, it's chief building inspector here. Ann, did you, do you have any comments, or are you just here?
I'll give questions.
Excuse me, we'll have the planning department first. I just wanted to let you know, yeah, that Ann is in the audience if we need her. Brian, please, thanks. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. Brian Frank, chief environmental analyst with town planning department.
I'll go ahead and swear you, I'll swear in, Brian.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Maybe my presence up here can obviate the need for Aram to testify, because I do think the code is pretty clear in its language. I respectfully but strongly disagree with Rick's characterization of that code provision and its limitation. I don't believe there's any ambiguity in the language and the intent of the language of the code. I'm going to hand you copies of the code section in a moment with certain sections bold-faced. I'm going to put it up on the screen, and we can kind of walk through it together and explain what the, what the intent, what the language is, and what the requirements are. So as Rick mentioned, the use of a sandbag or some type of geotextile is one of several activities that are authorized pursuant to 255-429 of the town code under the heading of emergency activities. It's a shortcut to the natural resource special permit process, really, and it is intended for emergency, short-term limitation. Those activities are spelled out very clearly, what is and what is not allowed, and what the requirements associated with each one of those are. I'm going to bring you the, I'm going to put up the code section in a moment. I have hard copies here. Obviously, the town code is not bold-faced or highlighted, so where you see that, that's, that is where emphasis is added. Nancy Lynn, I think there's one here for you.
Oh, thank you.
There should be one. This, this is text directly from the town code. So, you know, as I mentioned, there are several activities that are allowed under emergency provision, and these are really short-term mitigation measures. They consist of moving the building back, undertaking some type of coastal restoration, shoring up a building to prevent structural damage, or the use of some type of geotextile. At the time, the GeoCubes were not as common a sandbag type of protection structure as the more traditional sandbags that you tend to see on the news in riverine situations. But these, the GeoCubes that are out there, you know, nobody's arguing that they qualify as a, as a geotextile erosion control structure. But the code emphasizes that the installation of a geotextile tube or sandbag system with provisions for its eventually, eventual removal is required by this section. Later on in the code, it does require, as Rick had mentioned, that these are the requirements under four, subheading four, as to what the requirements are to determine that it's eligible for an emergency activity. And in the case specifically of, of the duration of an authorized activity, and I think four and fi, E and F under here are very important, especially E. An authorization for the undertaking of an emergency activity pursuant to this section shall be valid for a period of time not to exceed six months. Such authorization may be renewed for one additional period not to exceed three months, provided that, and this, you know, then there are the requirements that are associated with that. But the last sentence is very important, and I think really is telling the intent and language of the town code. All emergency activity authorized under this section shall be completed prior to the expiration of said emergency authorization, or the activity shall be deemed work subject to and requiring a natural resource special permit provision to the other provisions of the article of the code. So the idea that there is nothing in the code to preclude the principal building inspector from issuing a new permit, I think, is clearly contradicted by this code section here. It's contracted, contradicted in language, it's contradicted in intent. There is no doubt that First Coastal was aware of this time limitation when they applied for the building permit. Their building permit application on the plan includes a removal plan. The removal plan is required to get a building permit. So this is not, nobody was blindsided by this. Nobody did not see the requirement for this coming. They agreed to it. They included it on the building permit. This is directly from their building permit.
And isn't a building, isn't a building permit like affidavit? I mean, you fill an affidavit for a building permit agreeing to uphold the law, the code of town of East Hampton, so.
I'm going to defer to Nancy Lynn on that. I'm going to, I'm going to stay out of the weeds of the legal stuff and leave that to the attorneys. But on two separate pages of that building permit application, the First Coastal plan indicated that the GeoCubes to be removed no later than six months after the date of the issuance of the town of East Hampton building permit, subject to the extension. And then there's some detail there about how they were going to remove the bags in their entirety, empty out the sand, regrade the beach, plant it with beach grass at the end of the duration of that permit. That's listed on the site plan, and the exact same text is listed on the cross-section.
And Brian, as well, in that building permit, correct, if, if the cubes ever become exposed within 30 days, they're supposed to be, the sand is supposed to be brought in within 30 days?
Or they're supposed to be removed by?
Or removed.
That's correct, and we discussed at the, at the hearing for the property next door, and you kind of saw from the video, and Aram acknowledged, they can't do that. They cannot comply with that permit condition. It's too far seaward, interacts with the shoreline too often. They cannot effectively keep this thing shoreline-neutral in any way, shape, or form. And I was going to touch on that.
Thank you.
Later.
Okay, I'll let you.
Well, that, that's fine. The building permit that was issued, I don't have the cover face here, but it's very clear the duration of the building permit on the cover face of the building permit, that limited time duration. Again, they accepted that time limitation when they accepted the permit. And I want to talk a little bit about what's happening at Bayview Avenue, because I don't want to downplay the severity of the situation out there. The video is very telling. We went through a whole bunch of pictures of the beach during the Greco reconstruction application. We did the same thing on the Ruru revetment hearing next door. The erosion out there is severe. There's no denying it. But I also think there's no denying that the erosion out there is not new, it's not recent, it's not a surprise. This has been one of the more rapidly eroding areas of Bayfront shoreline in town, and it has been for decades, long in advance of the current owner's 2017 acquisition of the property. I know it's been in the family for a while, but as Mr. Greco said, he helped build this house in '79. Anybody who's been familiar with this area for a long length of time should, should know what's happening out there. I've been there numerous times throughout my tenure with the town. We started kind of documenting what was happening out there in 2010. I, I helped both the prior owners get permits to relocate the sanitary systems off the beach after the December 2010 nor'easter, where they used to be on the north side of the residences. Both property owners undertook a sanitary relocation that did involve some identification of the wetlands for permitting purposes, and this is, oh boy, I didn't take it. This is what the property looked like after the December 2010 nor'easter. This is also a condition that I'm sure, I feel reasonably sure that Aram would characterize as, as an emergency, and I think some other engineers would too. I think it's hard to deny that this exposure is serious. But yet, the erosion out here has been managed non-structurally effectively. Usually, each permit has only been several hundred yards of sand, anywhere from three to 350 yards of sand. But if you take a look at the building permit history, again, I'm not going to add anything to them, but I have highlighted it. There was a doom reconstruction issued to Greco in 1994. 250 cubic yards of sand in 2011. 350 yards in 2012. 350 again in '13. A renewal of prior permits in '15 and '16. Another renewal in 2017. That's, you know, each amount of sand is less than the sand that has been placed over this sandbag revetment at its initial construction. Again, what's happening here was not a surprise. Nobody woke up one morning and said, my God, look at what's happening at the end of Bayview Avenue. I didn't, I didn't see this, I didn't see this coming. This has been a steady progression. Both of the prior owners have managed it adequately with non-structural restoration. That is something that, you know, this area does warrant some type of long-term planning, and the applicants are entitled to do that. You know, but this is the property in 2010. This is what the prop, both properties at the, this is what the end of Bayview Avenue looked like in, in the spring of 2013. I could tell you this distance if you wanted me to look it up, but again, this is not a significant distance between the edge of the escarpment and the deck of the house on either Greco, and certainly not Ruru to the west. Again, it doesn't really matter so much for the appeal, but this house, these houses are on a filled wetland, so you have very, very low elevations, both to the east and west, coupled with the other coastal processes here. It really does heighten the vulnerability of these houses that were only built in 1979. These things haven't been there, you know, that long, relatively speaking. I think the emergency as represented by Greco is somewhat undermined by the timeline of their reconstruction application. That application, as Rick said, was submitted in 2017. It wasn't completed until 2019. It was somewhat fast-tracked with less-than-typical building plans to get it, to get it before the board. I did meet with Mr. Greco and Matty Norvillis, then of Rick's office, in the summer of 2017 to discuss the issues associated with the application. In that reconstruction application, I neglected to mention that even before the application was submitted, I met with Andrew Strong when he was with Rick's office to discuss the issues with the application, not in as much detail as we did in that August meeting. The Grecos are entitled to make whatever application they think they're entitled to. They can, they can take the planning department's advice to whatever extent they feel they want to. They can take all of it, they can take none of it. But the planning department's concerns for the location of the sanitary system have remained consistent throughout the discussions on these properties. The concern for the size of the footprint have been consistent throughout these, throughout the application process, I should say. And again, they can take that under advisement and do what they think is in their best interest in the prior application. They're certainly welcome to do that in whatever application comes along. They are not entitled to keep an erosion control structure on a property indefinitely, which is what they're asking to do, until they have a permit that they feel satisfied with to move on, whether that applica, whether they decide to make an application for a permanent hard structure, which was hinted at, at least in the Ruru application, or a reconstruction application, which was also mentioned in the Ruru property, which is the property on the east side. We had that hearing in May. We still don't have an application to move that, that house landward. So for something that's urgent, for something that's an emergency, the timeline for a residential reconstruction application is not really, really consistent with that. You know that, this board knows, and I'm sure Rick would agree, that coastal erosion structures are probably the most scrutinized type of natural resource special permit application that this board has. They have been for as long as I've been working for the town. You know, we, we talk about a lot of the, we talk a lot about the coastal erosion overlay district regulations. They were adopted in 2007. Rick drafted a lot of that initial legislation when he was in the, in the town attorney's office. That was continued principally by Denise Sherrin when she was an assistant town attorney. I worked very closely with the attorney's office in the final drafts of that legislation. I worked with the town board at that time. I attended the public hearings. The provision for 429 and this, and this short-term, really, the short-term provision for some type of structure was intended to be short and limited, and that's why you see that language in the code, that if it's going to be there longer than six months, even nine months, then the proper venue for that is a natural resource special permit application. You know the emphasis that the town code places on the importance of beaches. The town takes a lot of pride in the LWRP. This structure right now is having the exact same type of adverse environmental impacts that the town code is intended to at least try to avoid. It has resulted in a loss of public access to the beach. It's resulted in a lack of public access across the beach. It has resulted in an accelerated sedimentation of the wetlands on either side, as a lot of this fill cover and end erosion is scouring and being deposited directly in, in the wetlands. It's having aesthetic impacts, which are perhaps a lesser impact than maybe some of the other ones that I just mentioned. But, but that's why the town code has always placed a lot of emphasis on scrutinizing erosion control applications, so that their location, material, design impacts alternatives, and mitigation can be properly evaluated and assessed by, by this board. None of that happens in, in, in a short-term application like this. None of that occurred with this application. The only mitigation that's really there is from the DEC permit, and they've told you that they can't do it.
Could you comment on the, the town's right to do the restoration work, or the right, I'm reading from F. The town shall have the right to use any security posted in connection therewith in order to undertake these tasks?
Well, there, I don't believe a security was posted and associated with this, and respectfully, that's a little bit beyond the scope of this hearing. This hearing is about that the building inspector acted correctly in not issuing a new building permit, and the planning department would emphatically encourage you to uphold the building inspector's determination. And the duration has been more than twice what's allowed in the town code right now. That permit was actually issued in April of 2018. If you want to give allowances, they didn't get their DEC permit until July. It was installed in late July, and it's been there ever since. That's, that's 18 months. That installation, you know, again, I think you have some of these photos in your record. But this is, this is the type of activity that is not really intended to go on in the code unmitigated. This is, this is the revetment under construction. This is obviously the Ruru house. This is the Greco house. Yeah, obviously, a lot of the sand got carried away and has been, at least some of that is deposited in wetland. But, but this is not what the town code is about, you know, keeping this, this was installed in July. The neighbors can tell you better than I can when it was initially exposed. When I was there in January of 2019, it was completely exposed. It's been completely exposed ever since. I, I, to my knowledge, there has never been a placement of sand over it. It has long been expired. The applicant has had a reasonable amount of time to have a Plan B, and just the sense of saying, hey, we're going to be submitting an application for you to look at in the near future, is, is, is not satisfactory.
And then when, obviously, when it's not, when it's not covered with sand, that completely eliminates the public access from Bayview, because you.
Well, I, I think Rick's video shows that. I know this is the winter, but this is, this is, maybe it looks worse than this now, but this is essentially what. essentially what it, this is from February of this-
Right, and people can't climb up and down that to get to the beach.
That black is the filter fabric. You can see a little bit there. I think it's over the lowest course of sandbags that are installed under here.
Yeah, that's what confused me. But you see my point. When it's not covered with sand, the public on Bayview cannot get to the beach.
Correct.
Without trespassing on someone else's property.
That's another issue with the application. So where, where, if an erosion control structure should be on this property, where it's located, how it's mitigated, those are all, the whole reason that we have, we have, we have specific erosion, we have specific natural resource special permit standards for erosion control structures. You have the NRSP standards that you use for wetlands to protect dunes and everything else. You have a whole separate set of NRSP standards specifically for erosion control structures because of the significance of the impact that they have on East Hampton shoreline and the importance of East Hampton shoreline to its economic and cultural identity.
Brian, I wonder if you can comment on whether there's anything in the code, as the council suggested, that would prevent an applicant from reapplying for an emergency permit immediately after the first six-month and three-month extension has expired?
Well, I think the steps that are laid out in the code make it clear that that is, you know, there's no word in there that says a new permit is prohibited, but it says that it is no more for six months, but it can be extended for up to three. It says that the, among the submission requirements are a plan for its removal, and it says at the end of that authorization period, everything's got to be completed, or it becomes a natural resource special permit application.
So your argument would be that's what this should be?
My argument is that this should be removed. This is, this has been there for eighteen months-
I understand that, but I'm just trying to understand process and code-wise right now, what the, what the applicant's relief would be, if any.
I think the argument is that this structure is ineligible for a new building permit. This isn't a new activity. This isn't something, you know, I would agree with Rick and the concept that if you remove this and restored the beach, and a few years from now, you felt the need to do this again, they would be eligible for another six-month permit on the property. But to install the structure and to say that it can be there indefinitely as long as this is an eroding beach is basically an end run around all the natural resource special permit standards, and this board's ability to look at impacts and try to avoid them.
Let me maybe rephrase what Member Brennaman was getting at. In E., it says, "All emergency activity authorized under this section shall be completed prior to the expiration of said emergency authorization." And this is what I think he was getting at. "Or the activity shall be deemed work subject to and requiring a natural resource permit pursuant to other provisions of this article." So I guess-
Kicks it into a special-
Who de, who is the body that deems it subject to and requiring a national, natural resources special permit?
The way the code works is if it's deemed, then it is, is by law that that's what, by creating this legislation, the town board deemed it so, that if it meets these requirements, it's deemed to need a natural resources special permit.
Thank you, thank you, council.
And so the emergency has, okay, I got it.
I think basically what the interpretation of this, if I may, is that if it's an emergency, you've got the initial period of time. You can extend that for the additional time. After that, you need to go for a special permit because you weren't able to, that length of time was not enough to get you past the emergency. So your issue has continued. It's no longer an emergency. Now it is in need for a natural resources permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Brian? Any questions? No? Thank you, Brian. We know you're here if we need you later. Thank you. Okay. Oh, we have that, okay. Okay, is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this application?
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Joseph Karpinski, I live at 14 Bayview Avenue. K-A-R-P-I-N-S-K-I.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm sorry, your address again? I'm sorry.
14 Bayview Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, good evening again.
Good evening again, thank you for having us here. Out of curiosity to start off with, like the Ruru property, are you guys the lead agency currently with this one? Or do you guys have to go through that whole process again? Are you the lead agency for all of them now?
Well, for this, we are.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I know that, that was as of, you know, and then you made the decision with the other one with the environmental review on September 24th, which their 45 days is up, so I'm sure we'll be possibly hearing about that.
Yes.
The two properties together, obviously, by taking the road in the middle, have conjoined themselves as one, as far as I'm concerned. That is the road in the middle. It is 30 feet wide. With it, I just want to make sure that you know, Wall Bridge, I stopped there and asked them if they thought it was a road, and they said it certainly is, and I said, "Where does it go?" They said, "Right out into the water." So I just want you to make sure that you know, that's the 35, 30-foot-wide road right there in the middle, even though it's much smaller. The pictures that you showed, it's quite amazing, because if I jumped down on the beach right here, you know, it's a little lower now. It's about six feet tall. That's me.
Right.
There's no danger sign if anybody wants to walk to the end of the beach and fall off.
Yeah.
You'd think either property would have thought of that. I think First Coastal would have thought of that. But you know, it's fine. I'm sure the piping plovers are somewhere in there, too. I've never seen one in 36 years, and my father's never seen one since he was 15. He just turned 70. So I'm just saying, that's always interesting, too. Especially when they wanted to redump sand in March, which is their nesting season, so it's always interesting. On the top, where you don't see the fence in this picture, because now they have that black tarp and the fence that's on top of it that they've constructed, that was constructed on April 27th. There's nothing in the DEC permit or the town permit that says that they can have a fence on top of that structure. So that makes it even taller than what it is already, because that's six feet, makes it seven feet. No building permit with that. When that also is being constructed, my neighbor Steve Grabowski was told by Nick Greco Jr. that someday there will be steps that will be built there, and we will all pay for it. I find it very interesting, since they're not around typically in the winter, and they don't help pave the road and pay for that. With that to be in compliance, after my father's second HIP operation, and to be ADA compliant to have any such structure to get us up over on the beach, that would have to be a 300-foot ramp at a seven-degree angle, according to Washington DC, because your code, that's where they would send that, just so you know. They don't deal with that. It goes to Washington DC. On July 5th, Nick Greco Sr., he came around door-to-door apologizing for his son blocking the road. He has the new property at 79, and thanks to him with building his new structure, which is one of the provisions in our lovely private road, you will then pave part of the road. So he just did that. So if you get to take a new trip down there, you'll have some nice new asphalt to go over. When all this was done, you know, my family's been there a very long time. They were there before the 200-year-old High Watermark barricade ever came down. I just wanted to, if I could submit some pictures, since, you know, I like to do that like last time, you know, rock, rock, and oppose 40 feet a year. That doesn't happen. Anyway, this was January of 2018. I just want to point out my locust tree, my limb that went across the road. We're not a town road, so somebody should have been knocking on my door to let me know that this was being taken down. Besides destroying three of the limbs on my tree, my spruce tree also went missing. And this was all done when First Coastal was doing their work at the end of the road. And their workers also admitted that they took the tree, so just want that. That's what it looked like after.
Now, why did the workers say they took the tree?
They took the limb.
They took-
And then spruce tree's gone.
Because their trucks, their equipment-
I guess their equipment must have hit it. I mean, for years, equipment has gone down there. Sand was continuously dumped down there over the two properties over the years. Nobody ever had an issue. Asplun never had an issue when they've ever come with a bucket truck to come down and do anything, but hey, they can come on my property and take it. For context, I just want to give this shot of the road. This is from my property looking down at it, you know, since they want to say that they're, they're home. By the way, with that water rising up, that now goes up six feet, because they stop the natural flow of the water. It used to go in that center section where there's the unpaved road that is just the sand. So they've completely changed the whole trajectory of anything that happens at any time. I just want to point it out, as I gave that picture that you just have, right down the bottom of the hill, this is how high the water came during Sandy. I just wanted to say, homes are still standing, aren't they? I guess the water wasn't too much of a problem during Sandy. This was just another shot that's closer. I initialed them already, Denise, so you don't have to ask me to do that again after.
Thank you.
With that, I just also wanted to give this picture during Sandy. My wife was kind enough. Unfortunately for me, I was either on the ambulance or taking down trees myself for work. This is Mulford, so I just want to show that the water and how it comes up on Mulford. So I would say, if we ever have another sandy event, unfortunately, now they're going to make it where their homes, instead of the water gracefully going past it and not destroying it, it would come up to the top of these cubes, and it's going to plow right through their home. And so under New York state rule and federal law, 40% of their home goes away. They won't be rebuilding anything ever, ever again. But with this, now they're going to push the water around the side, push it this way, push it that way. If they push it onto Mulford, and you see those pictures on Mulford, homes number, if you went up Mulford and you went the first home, the second home that's there, third, fourth, and fifth, because of their low level, the water will find it and take it away. So just some points I'd like to make out, but I think that's enough for me tonight, and I'm sure when we come again, I'll have some new facts for you like I always do.
Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public? Yes, Kevin.
Good evening, board. Kevin McCallister, I'm president of Defend H2O. We maintain offices in Neuyak, and I reside at 26 Indian Wells Highway.
Okay, thank you. I'll swear you in, Kevin?
Oh, sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I last addressed the board and spoke, I'll say, bigger picture with respect to the trends in shoreline hardening throughout the east end, throughout Long Island. I'm here again to support the decision by the building inspector and certainly the position put forth by the planning department. I had shared with the board in my role as the iconic baykeeper, which I started in 98, I think it was 99 or 2000, that was really the beginning of drafting and crafting the LWRP. And I recall commenting extensively on shoreline hardening. To the town's credit, they were pragmatic in identifying zones, oceanfront, commercial areas, as well as essentially unaltered or natural shorelines. Again, I won't get into the science of seawalls. Brian covered that extensively, but suffice to say, obviously, there's implications. We're seeing it on this particular property. This board is addressing and dealing with other applications, other projects that are before them. To the point of the code, it is well-founded, and the provision for emergency response is reasonable, the six months with the three-month extension. Obviously, there's provisions for demonstrated action on the, on part of these property owners. We're not seeing that here. The implications of allowing these to come in, and Brian used the term "end around," those are actually my exact words, that I feel is happening here. We really have to hold the line on this. Ultimately, if this is allowed, I will say that, in essence, this board will be memorializing a structure, and it's going to be very hard-pressed to say no to the next one. Again, this is moving into permanence. You heard the neighbor speak about, I guess, what the, you know, the future holds for this particular area. I don't see it being removed. I think it needs to be removed because we do see the ramifications to adjacent property. The enscower certainly is very typical of the structures. So we are displacing problems. We will basically string these, chain reaction over time, and I know this isn't necessarily the particular area, but again, there are locations in this town that, when they go in, you're going to force the adjacent property owner to follow suit. And, you know, short order, five, 10, 15 years' time, all of a sudden, you have an armored shoreline. You have lost habitat. You will have diminished coastal resiliency. You have extinguished public access, which really this town is found on. You know, it's problematic. So I ask this board, hold fast, support staff in their well-founding position, support the code. Brian pointed out, you know, there seemed to be some mincing of words, if you will, on extensions. I read it to be very clear. And again, going back to the action and the responsibility for the property owner, we're not seeing it. So again, I guess I'll close by saying, I hope you do the right thing and, you know, back the code and the good judgment of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Grabowski, number five, Harley Boulevard, East Hampton.
Thanks, Steve. Could you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
I currently own a house and a vacant piece of property on Bayview Avenue. My family built the Ruru house, as you know it as, years ago, back in the early 70s. So we have a lot of history down there. And all those things that Brian was talking about earlier in 2010 and '12 and dune and septic, that was us, all right? The Grecos, they applied for dune and stuff like that, but it wasn't tubes or anything at that time. It was just sand and fill. And we always worked together, okay? But, and it was very seamless, I will say, and I thank Brian Frank for that. You worked with me, and it was awesome. But the only thing that really disturbs me is how this application was drawn and approved closing off that private road. I mean, that really goes, it really bothers the heck out of me, because we're always very careful to maintain that. And I maintain that out of respect for the neighbors, okay? And everybody, there was people walking back and forth all the time through that road that lived on that road. So they effectively, by doing that, had now said it belongs to Greco and it belongs to Ruru. Nobody else can go down there, and you really can't, because like Joe said earlier, it's a good five, six feet to the sand, you know?
Yeah, we've seen it, yeah.
So I think now, at this point, and it clearly is on the map. I mean, I'm still so befuddled how this thing got approved, showing a private road and the joining of these two tubes.
Well, Steve, that's why I mentioned earlier in the diagrams, it was approved with sand coming all the way over it down at a slope, where it's like a beach dune, where if they had kept the word and replenished it every 30 days or for the permit, you would walk down that the way you'd walk down a dune of sand. And you would have had access.
I would obviously say, though, these things are crossing property boundaries to cross that road.
And they are, you're right.
And so, he's got a point, I would think.
Well, the thing is this, okay? I understand, and again, with respect to First Coastal and the Grecos and Ruru, I understand that, and you know, Frank, by being, I'm sorry, Roy, by being in construction, that that's the better way to build this wall, is to keep it going and connected. But it shouldn't have been done that way, you know? It really should not have been done that way. And if it was going to be built that way, all the property owners, their own land and houses on that street should have been noticed and said, "By the way, this private road's being closed off, okay? And you're entitled to come down to the hearing and voice your opinion on that."
Well, that's my point. It should have been backfill constantly, so that you could-
Forget about the maintenance. I'm talking about the initial application, initial installation.
Yeah.
Okay? This is how it should have been done, all right? It should have been noticed, all the homeowners and the residents on the street, that this road was going to be closed off. And you can't tell me, please tell me that nobody noticed, didn't notice it. I mean, my God, I mean, it's right there, you know? And it just irks me that we weren't given the proper respect as longtime homeowners on the street, to say, "Hey, come down, take a look at this thing. This is what these people want to do." I mean, I understand protecting the house.
Can you pull back from the microphone a little bit, Steve? Yeah, stay back a little bit.
Before we couldn't hear no, you couldn't hear-
Yeah, right, I know, thank you.
So, but I think now, what's being given to this board, in my opinion, by Mr. Greco, is now a golden opportunity for this board. He needs to get his permit renewed, okay? And my suggestion is that he reach out to Ruru and himself, and he reconstruct that and open up that opening in that private road and right this wrong. And what they can do is when they open up the tubes and- And what they can do is, when they open up the tubes in that private road, they can turn them at a right angle and come down their property line if they need to, you know, to run them out. Because that's what was done on the east side of Ruru. They made a right turn. When they got the state property, they stopped and made a right turn.
Right.
And, I mean, that's what should be done in this application. This should be righted. This is a big wrong that hasn't been righted, and it's time, okay? I mean, and it's just, it's been, you know, flagrant, you know, violation, you know, we'd sit here and talk about it. I mean, they were supposed to be long gone anyway, but that's not, you know, I have no dog in that particular fight. My argument is that road and that road only. How they choose to protect their home is their business. I certainly wouldn't deny them if I could help it. You know, I understand, I get that. I owned that house down there one time, so I understand. But, again, I urge this board and the build department to take the lead on this and say, "Okay, you guys want to renew this permit to keep these things full, whatever length of time you guys decide? You've got to remodel it."
We understand, we get it, we understand, yep.
Okay?
Yep. Thanks for coming out, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else here this evening wishes to speak? No? Okay, Ann?
Good evening, Ann Glennon, Principal Building Inspector. 191 Gardner Avenue, East Hampton.
Thank you. I'll swear you in, Ann. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
One of the reasons I'm here is in case you did have questions, and also, since it was my interpretation, that I didn't renew it. But one thing I did want to make clear, because it was stated that they would never notified, two letters went out, because the first one went out as soon as we realized they had extended it past their property and closed the road. A second letter went out, when I turned down the permit, also telling them they need to open up the road. So, I just wanted to clear that up, that there were some letters sent out, and one of the biggest issues was that that road was closed, and it shouldn't have been.
Right, right.
All right.
Did you get any response to those letters?
I did not.
And those letters went to the homeowners?
Correct. I would have to double-check, to be honest with you. I know one of them went to the homeowner, and I think the second one did also.
Now, when they refiled for the permit, did they, did the new permit filing include the restoration of the road?
No.
Did the original permits, to your knowledge...
It was extended, it was brought to my attention by the neighbors, it was, and I will admit, it was an error of the building department's miss that it was extended further than their property.
On the original permit?
On the original emergency.
Any other questions for Ann? No? Thank you for coming out, Ann, we appreciate it. Okay. I think that wraps us up. Oh, you have a comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Aaron Turcuni, and First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Aaron. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great.
I'm merely here to make two or three very short points. Number one, we did attempt to file an application, and you have an affidavit in your file, or memo in your file, describing that process. Second thing is, I'd like to reiterate that this is an emergency situation, and that removal of these cubes at this situation, in this scenario, will result in a condition as bad or worse than occurred in March of 2018, when the emergency application was initially filed, and that the...
Before you go on, did you evaluate beach replenishment as an alternative to the bags as well?
Yes, I did, and I'd like to respectfully but strongly disagree with Mr. Frank's characterization that you can manage the flooding and erosion on the site with beach restoration alone. And clearly, that didn't work, because in March of 2018, the erosion was underneath the home, and undermining the deck, and soon to undermine the home. So, you know, I think the facts of the case are, they did beach restoration, and dune restoration for a number of years, and they're still getting an erosion rate of 3.5 feet per year. That's because you simply cannot do beach restoration on one or two parcels and be effective. Beach restoration, in order to be effective, has to be done across a long enough stretch with the right material. That, what was done here was, you know, basically a stop-gap measure, and that's what they did.
Did you file a permit, the permits for both properties?
Yes.
Did you file a permit to close the road?
Filed the permit, the drawings that are on the file.
Which showed a closing of the road.
I don't call it a closing of the road. We filed, what's in the file is our work. It says our name on it, we did it.
Right, so then you have to own that, so you probably agree with me that this was intended to be constantly filled over with sand, so that the people on Bayview could walk down, like you're walking down a dune.
Yeah, that clearly was the intent.
Now, is your office in charge, since you filed for the building permit, I would think that you all would be the ones monitoring and replenishing the sand over the Geo cubes? Is that correct?
We do monitor, yes.
Well, you monitor, but when's the last time you placed sand?
Well, we don't have, we have to operate on the instructions of the owner, we do not control the property.
Right, and therefore, the bonding, the bonding that comes into play and that sort of thing, or the removal, yeah, okay.
Well, but I would just point out for the board that, on the Ruru application, we requested multiple times to cover the bags and were denied.
That was at the very end, after your permits were expired?
Regardless, we attempted to do it.
Well, it's not regardless, you should have been doing it before they expired. And you probably know that by not doing it, and the owners, by not doing it, you were here, you were cutting off access of all of these folks to get the beach.
I don't acknowledge that.
You don't acknowledge...
I'd just like to say one other thing that...
I don't think we need you to acknowledge it, actually.
Okay. You know, Brian said that it would be okay to remove the structure, regrade the beach, plant with beach grass, and then if a couple of years later, you had an emergency again, issue a new emergency permit. Think about that for about 30 seconds, really. Because if you remove these things, in less than 30 days, the water's going to be under this building. So then, you're going to go and then put it all back in again, and then do this over again for six or nine months? Really, is that, is that really the intent of the code?
So, we all know, just, we all know that the applicants here have recently come before us with a newer house, a larger house, and it was denied by this board. So we all know that. But, when this application was first made by your office, way back when, you would, what were your plans, working with these owners? What were your plans to restore the beach, or were you planning on just keeping, going with the Geo cubes and keep reapplying and reapplying?
No, we didn't, our, the plan was to put an application in front of the board, the board to approve it, and the cubes to be removed.
Right, but that didn't come in for a very long time, and it was not a simple plan of moving this house back, it was a complete redevelopment of the site.
Mr. Chairman, you realize...
You're defending this application, Aaron.
No, I am here merely stating the facts...
And you applied for the building permit.
No, that is incorrect, sir. I am here merely stating that the removal of these cubes will create a near-instantaneous emergency at this site. Mr. Frank has acknowledged that you have a three-and-a-half-foot-per-year erosion rate. The high water line now, if you draw it between, across this property, cuts through part of the house and part of the deck. And to, and Mr. Frank acknowledges that you could take it out, you could let the emergency occur again, reapply and be eligible.
Right, okay, now, this is not directed specifically at you, but for the record, my comment is this, that when this, if you all feel that way, when this application was first put in and approved, these owners should have immediately been applying to either raise that existing house, not redevelop and make a larger house and all that stuff. Either raise that house on piling, move it back, that's, if they were so concerned that this was such an emergency, and none of that has happened until they finally came forward with a total redevelopment of the site with a larger house at this house denied. And you don't even have to answer that.
I won't respond, because it's...
But I'm putting that on the...
But I will say, I will say this, that what I heard Mr. Frank say was, that if you did come back and reapply, you would be eligible, maybe for an emergency permit, but there are other permissions within that code for how to do it. So, whether you would be granted a hardening structure like this would be a difference, might be a different story.
Well, that wasn't my interpretation of his words.
Well, I've heard him in multiple occasions on these applications, on multiple occasions, and he's been consistent all along, from what I've heard.
Okay, I think we're good.
I just wanted to make sure, since I have Ruru's plan to take the road right there in the middle.
Okay.
I'll submit that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Richard Whalen, again, the attorney for the applicants, Diane and Nick. First of all, I have to adjust a couple of things that Brian had said at the outset, and actually, I do want to speak to the comments from the other property owners on the road. It is not the owner's intention to block access to the road. In a new submission, we will have to address that issue, and we understand that. The idea, the Greco's idea, is not to block pedestrian access from property owners on Bayview Avenue to the road. We acknowledge that's, and the result of what's happened...
But the point, my question was, when you already applied for a building permit to keep these, and it was denied, that's why you're here tonight?
Yep.
My question is, when you applied that building permit, did you correct the situation at the road? Whether you're going to do it again or not, and correct it again, was it done already?
I don't think the building plans that were submitted on June 3rd were any different.
Okay.
But we will have to make a new submission, if this board agrees that we have the right to do that, and we will have to address it at that time. The fundamental issue is very simple. The town code, the zoning code provision we're talking about, does not say that you can't make a new application. It doesn't say that. The provision in question states very clearly that you have a single application, and that can be extended one time. It doesn't say that once that application is completed, you can't reapply. Now, remember, Delene did raise a legitimate question here, and that says that, his point was that, an emergency authorization under 4-29 does state at the end of the emergency permit, that you would have to remove the Geo cubes, all right? And I suppose the board could say, you know, "You really have to remove everything, and before you can make a new application, you have to remove everything." We're asking for a practical interpretation of the code. We could remove, even Mr. Frank, in speaking here, admitted that if the Geo cubes were gone, after an undetermined period of time, the applicant could come back and say, "Yo, we still have an emergency," and could reapply, and could once again get the emergency authorization. It's very clear that we could do that. The issue is whether or not we should remove the Geo cubes first, and then say, "Okay, we have the emergency," and immediately reply and put them back.
Rick, it's not very clear, and again, I'm not going to revisit, Brian went through the whole code, it's all here in E, in the whole section.
Where is it?
Let me finish, let me finish. I'm not going to get into an argument about that, but I will say this, obviously, you as an attorney know, that the code was not written so that you could keep coming back and getting your building permit denied, and taking months and months and months and months and kick the can down the road.
Correct.
And it's very clear when you read this, it was not written that way. So, that's not holding water for me.
It is not the intention, despite comments that you heard about it in the end run. It is not the applicant's intention to have Geo cubes in front of this property permanently. This is a temporary measure. The applicant did submit an application for new construction in 2017, I remind you, before the Geo cubes were even applied for. An application was submitted for a new house. That application had to be revised, there was a great deal of time, eight to 10 months spent by the engineer. Once the application was resubmitted, and, you know, I commend Brian for his work on this application, but even on our resubmit, on an application which he concedes, he had at least two prior contacts with the applicant's agents. It still took him 14 weeks to turn around our resubmission, so that it could go to hearing. That's three and a half months, just on the planning department review, and we're supposedly bound by a maximum nine-month time window. You have to move the house back. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, your idea of putting the house on pilings, I believe this house actually does sit on pilings. Pilings are not the answer. The house has to be moved to more conforming location, and we all acknowledge that on this property with the wetlands, that's not an easy thing to do. We understand that you want a smaller house, the applicants are going to have to revise their application and do that, but that takes time. It isn't such a simple matter to go and go, "Okay, we're going to move the house back." We can't just go get a building permit to move the aspect, we need your approval, we need a design that you will approve. So, the idea here is not that this is a permanent structure, it's a temporary structure, and as soon as we can resubmit an application to move that house back, we're going to do it. We're working on it right now, we only got your decision of denial approximately three weeks ago. The next thing I want to say is, this is not something...
Again, you don't have another 10 minutes, this was a closing comment, just so you...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Frank got 16 minutes before his questions.
Right.
This is a very important matter. I want to address the issues that have been raised.
Just so you know, you don't have Court Blanche here.
I appreciate your deference. The zoning code is, this is not the only provision in the town code where the issue arises as to whether or not an applicant can apply for a new permit after a prior permit has expired. Chapter, if you, the building department chapter of the code is chapter 102. You're all very familiar with building permits. If you go to chapter 102, and specifically section 102-9, a building permit issued by the building department is only valid for one month, I'm sorry, for one year. You can extend that on two occasions for between six months and a year. I don't know why someone would come in for a six-month extension, but in, under chapter 102 of the town code, you're allowed to get a building permit and extensions for a maximum of three years. The code is then silent, and what happens? What happens in real life?
This isn't that kind of a permit, Rick, this is not a building, this is not that same kind of a, this is an emergency permit.
Mr. Chairman.
You aren't given a year.
Mr. Chairman, we're analogizing between different sections of the code that deal with the same thing. My point is that...
The same thing, it's not building a house.
If you'd like to make my argument, maybe you'll be able to understand it.
No, but I'm just saying it's not the same permit, and you're...
John, it's an analogy.
Okay.
All right? Under chapter 102, you can apply for a building permit.
We know this, I know this.
Well, maybe the other members of the board would like to hear what I have to say about it.
Continue.
I'm glad that you know it. The maximum time allowed under chapter 102 for a building permit and extensions is three years. What happens if after three years, and this does occur to contractors sometimes, what happens after three years if your building is not completed? If your swimming pool hasn't been put in yet? You know what you do? You make a brand-new application for a new building permit. You have to submit new plans, you have to submit a new fee. By the way, that's exactly what First Coastal did. They did not apply for an extension of time, they submitted an entire new application with a new set of plans and a new permit fee. Exactly what you would do under chapter 102 if your building permit after three years had expired. The bottom line is very simple, despite all the talk about this, the code section in question does not have a prohibition against a new submission. We would all concede, even Brian Frank conceded, that if the Geo cubes were to be removed for some undetermined period of time, and the emergency condition still existed, erosion was still threatening, there was still imminent peril to a major structure on the property, clearly, the applicant could come back in and could make a new emergency activity application. I think that's what the code was intended to do. This provision is a creature of the town board, it's just legislative enactment, the town board set it up this way, and if, at the end of the nine-month period of time, the applicant has to make a brand-new application, there's nothing here that says they can't do it. They're allowed to go through this emergency process if they have an emergency. It's not, we all know that to build a proper revetment, you can't do it in that period of time. When you have an emergency, you need a process like this, and that's what the town board set up.
But I don't understand why you're arguing this, and because you've already, under your premise, you have resubmitted for a new building permit, have you not?
Yes, and we were denied.
And you're denied, and that is why you're here.
And we were denied.
Right, so I don't understand why you went through that big thing just before, because you were granted the right to apply for a new building permit.
No, no, actually, first of all, let me, the building department, and you may want some clarification from Ann this, the new submission was made by First Coastal on June 3rd of this year. And to clarify, neither I, nor the owners, nor First Coastal ever received a denial letter. I thought Ann made a comment that she might have done a denial. But our point is, we don't know exactly why the building department denied our resubmission. We assume, but we have never seen this in writing, and Ann really didn't clarify it when she studied it before, we assume that their view was that, after nine months, they cannot issue a new permit at all. And I'm analogizing to chapter 102 of the code and saying, "Well, if your building permit expired, you make a brand-new building permit application." The code does not say any of it. There's the same, the same absence of clarity, if you will, in chapter 102 as there is in There's the same absence of clarity, if you will, in chapter 102 as there is in the section they're dealing with right now. So, we believe we have the right to make a new application. In order to get that permit approved, we have to still show there is still an emergency, still an imminent peril to a major structural component on the property. If we're allowed to do that, we are going to attempt to address the issue of road access. And we are going to proceed with our application for a new home, because this is not intended to be a permanent structure. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, Brian, did you want to say something, Brian? Okay. Yeah, we've got, we still have a full agenda ahead of us. You know that, you know that, Brian.
Just a couple of points of clarification. I don't know that it was much of a concession, or that it's a good idea to remove the structure in its entirety only to reapply and put a new one in. I, Brian Frank again, by the way. Simply saying that that is, I think the language of the code doesn't prohibit that. The intent of the code, and the language of the code, you know, 429 speaks about emergencies, and it speaks about what can be authorized, and for how long, and what those conditions are. And I disagree that there's the same, that there's any ambiguity, I think comparing it to chapter 102 is ludicrous when the code section specifically says what happens at the end of that time period. It's pretty clear. It's also pretty clear that unlike a building, ordinarily, an erosion control structure like this is pretty heavily scrutinized by this board. It always has been, even before these new erosion regulations. And this isn't an run on it, whether it's, I would agree with Rick that they're not intending to keep it permanent, but they are asking for it to be indefinite. They have had essentially two years. That building permit was issued in April. Mr. Greco, this has been in his family since the house was built, they know what's been happening here over time. This was not a matter of avulsion, where a huge chunk of land that had been there for centuries was ripped away in a storm event, and all of a sudden, now there was this condition that didn't exist. This erosion has been chronic and been coming up on this property, and again, I don't mean to undermine the severity of the situation, but it's not a short-term emergency. It had been managed effectively by the prior owners non-structurally, maybe Greco and Ruru, instead of spending all that money on the Geo cubes and their installation, should have used a larger volume of sand closer to the house than what they did. I don't know that it was ever planted with beach grass on the face, but again, that doesn't have, I guess that's more of a minor point. You know, a practical interpretation of the code, I don't know what that means. Either they're eligible for a new building, either this is eligible for an extension, and that's what they're asking for with a new building permit, or it isn't. The code set up very specific criteria and parameters for this structure that First Coastal agreed to, it's on their building permit. It was on their application when they submitted. They said at the end of nine months, we're going to remove it and restore the beach. Black and white, it's on their plan. One page of that is in your file, I didn't print it, and you know, I showed it to you on the screen here, but it's in their building permit. It's reiterated on the face of the building permit that this is what, you know, before I forget, because I did forget while I was up here before. Again, this is just the building history, it may not have the most recent stuff on it, this was in the file from the reconstruction application, but there's a copy here, the highlighted sections are the dune restorations that have gone on on this property. And in red is the building permit that was issued on April 17th that says placement of sand-filled Geo cubes and 1,000 cubic yards of sand, plant beach grass for a duration of six months with removal of the Geo cubes per approved plan. There was an agreement, they accepted the conditions of this permit, and now they're asking to reneg on it. You know, the timeline of the application, they're entitled to move at whatever pace they want to. I sincerely doubt it took David Rhodes eight months to design the sanitary system. I severely doubt that. Maybe, I don't know that it's necessary to get something in writing, I've been looking at David Rhodes's, you know, sanitary IA systems for over a year now, whether the Fuji or the hydro action. It's in the exact same location as the conventional system was in the first submission of the application. The same elevation, the same wetland setback. What really changed are the specs of the system, and a lot of that is driven by the company, you know, if you're looking at the Fuji Clean or the hydro action. Lastly, I do want to remind the board that in their extension, how they have said that they are concerned about the road, and they're addressing the road, they're not. They've asked for the same building permit that they were asking for the first time around. They're basically asking for an extension where the code says the max is nine months. Again, that was almost two years ago. There's been two years for some type of interim action, and again, I'm just going to say it one more time, and since I'm repeating myself, it's time to step down. But the timeline of the applicant's submission and the nature of that application belies the level of the emergency that they're procuring here.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Yes. Nicholas Greco Jr., for clarity. On four occasions-
Are you an attorney?
I am not, I should be sworn in.
I swear in, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. On four separate occasions, I have heard the term due diligence, and almost let the buyer beware. Twice tonight, once in the Ruru, the Ruru hearing for which I was an observer, and once in the work session where the review of our application to move the house back was undertaken. I want to just state that I find it shameful, shameful, that somebody would assert, whether the buyer understands risks or not, that they are entitled to less protection under the code, whether they know conditions or do not know conditions. And I believe it has no place in these public hearings.
No one asserted that.
I believe that's been asserted by Mr. Frank, and that's, this is my belief-
We often say that, it comes up on many applications, Mr. Greco, that when people such as yourself, especially you knew this property, you knew your family's houses on backfill wetlands, and people know what they're getting into, that's all it means. It doesn't mean they're going to be not given due process.
Then I wonder what relevance it takes in the proceedings when people make that comment.
I think it's relevant, I won't answer that.
Right now, what's before us is whether or not a poll of building inspectors.
That is, that's what I wanted to comment upon.
Okay, thank you, thanks, okay.
Richard Whalen again, the attorney for the applicant. Just to clarify, chapter 102, like the section that we're dealing with right now, like 255-429, does state what happens when you get a building permit. 429 says you get an emergency erosion permit, and you can extend it for one three-month period. In chapter 102, you can get a building permit, and you can extend it for up to two periods of between six and 12 months. So, the provisions are analogous, and after that, it doesn't state what happens.
But isn't there a big difference in that it doesn't tell you you have to tear your house down after the three times that you've renewed your building permit?
That's true, you don't have to undo the house, but if you're not completing the house, you have to make a new application.
Right, okay, okay.
Thank you.
I think we've gotten enough, okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, I would like to make a motion to close the appeal for Nicholas Greco at 117 Bayview Avenue in Amagansett, tax map number 300-84-1-3.1.
Second.
Conquer.
Conquer.
Okay, thank you, thank you all for coming out. Okay, let's keep moving here.
Want a cup of coffee?
Okay, I'll get right away into reading the next hearing. And, and thank you for coming out, Ann. Okay, this is, the next applicant is 60 Gannett Lane LLC. I think it's a typo here, it's Gansett Lane, I believe, yeah. It's a typo. Lot size and location, 18,600, pardon me, 18,600 square feet at 60 Gansett Lane, Ocean Bluff Gardens, Amagansett, tax map number 300-172-7-38. Description is an appeal of the chief building inspector's interpretation dated 10/21/2019 regarding the separation of structures. The relief sought is an appeal of the principal building inspector pursuant to 255-8-30A1 of the town code. Appellant seek to challenge the building inspector interpretation dated 10/21/2019 that a pool patio requires a five-foot separation for it not to be considered part of the swimming pool and/or regulation of the double setback. This is in a B resident zone, the flood zone is X, the secret class is type 1, and this is an appeal. But I did go down to the site this afternoon, it was, unfortunately, the afternoons are shorter, it's getting quite dark, and I met the applicant, and I have to say, Michael was asking me how about the timing, and I told him, well, the first one starts at 6:30, and then 6:50, and then 7:10, so legally, it could start 7:10, so Michael's been waiting patiently since 7 o'clock, so that's the way it goes in our world, Michael. So, as far as a field report, I don't, I'm not required to do one, but I did, Brian, or someone was kind enough to- Oh, I should do that, thank you, that's, thank you, counsel. Counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service? Thank you. Service and posting, thank you. But I did click off a few pictures, maybe we could just, to help the board who wasn't, did not visit the site. Nancy Lynn, if you would, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Double duties, here we go.
Okay, this is, we can go in kind of any order, that's a shot from the backyard, looking east. From the house, looking at the pool is covered in the green with kind of the reflection on it, that's the pool, and the limestone, the lighter color in the background, and the poolhouse obviously with the covered, kind of lighted trellis, or I'm not sure if it's a full roof, I can't recall now. Next, please, that's another angle, that's, excuse me, I took this from the end of the property where the original building permit was to have located the poolhouse and the paving, so this would be looking south and east. And again, real quickly here, between the columns and the pool, there is one foot of gravel between the pool coping, some of that gravel's covered by the pool cover. Next, Nancy Lynn, please. That's from that same location, looking back at the house, I'm looking kind of west and southwest there at the house. This is walking over and looking at the other angle, looking kind of due north. You can sort of see the gravel at the edge of the pool cover there. And the applicant informed me that these are limestone set on gravel in the back that we were just looking at, the pool patio that, the subject patio was limestone set on gravel, right there, yes. And that's the end, I think that's all I have right there.
Now, what's the last one?
Any, this isn't a full, and if anyone has any questions, they can ask them, otherwise we'll- Okay, good.
Let's go.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, Mark Catalano, attorney for the applicant, 10 Pantico Road, East Hampton, New York. And the gravel, that's recent, I mean, that's, the intent is for that to be grass, but I believe it died, and this is sort of an interim thing, but that's not the ultimate goal here, to have gravel, because that's, that would be a different, whole other structural problem. So, just to go quickly how we got here. So, in 2016, the applicant got a building permit for additions and renovation to the existing house, which included a pool cabana, which was in the original plan, at the other, at the northern end of the pool, which is that side. And that, he got a permit for that, and the, he was also going to extend the patio at that point to that, to the cabana that was proposed. After that, he came up with a different plan to move the cabana from the end to where it is now, also to extend the pool itself, and also to remove the entire patio that was around the pool originally. There had been a patio around the pool, so that was gone, and this would be the new plan. And he did this within a consultation with his architect, builder, surveyor, and all who believed that separating the pool from the cabana patio by a foot would be enough to make them be considered separate structures.
Now, a building permit was not applied for, though.
There was a building permit, this modification was, he went in, it wasn't an existing building permit for the original plan.
I know that.
Right, so the new plan was a modification, that was not a permit, the permit was not modified itself for that.
Right.
That happens to some extent, I mean, on some of these things. But the, it was, we did bring it in to the building department to show them the new plan, and they did, one of the inspectors did give a verbal okay to this, to the one-foot separation.
So, why didn't you file a building permit, then?
Well, we didn't, it wasn't requested that we had to modify the plan.
Well, of course, you know that, as an attorney, you know if you move a building on a survey, you have to have the survey updated, you have to get the-
No, I understand, sometimes, I mean, but some modifications are allowed without changing the actual permit. Whatever that, in any case, that's really not the issue.
Well, it is the issue, but go ahead.
It's not, okay, but it's not the issue that I'm, we're talking about here in the determination. So, that was, so that work was done. Separation was done, and we went for the final C of O inspection, and it did not pass. The building inspector made a determination that one foot was not enough between the two, between the patio and the pool, and this patio was considered a pool patio. And then, the inspector cited the provision that's probably in your package, section 255-1120, which specifies that, it reads accessory building structures and uses. Separation, accessory buildings, including garages, if detached from the main building, shall not be less than five feet from the main building. So, that's understandable, but that does not apply here, because language is clear that this is not a building, the patio is not a building, the pool is not a building. A building is a roofed structure supported by walls, posts, beams, and there's no main structure, no main building we're talking about either. So, I see the, you know, the building inspector used what she could in the code, but the language is not applied to this situation. The zoning code, I mean, it has to be basically construed according to the words that are used in the ordinary meaning, and there's no, there's no way I can see that you can apply the definition of this provision on buildings to the structures.
Mark, let me just clarify my comment earlier and add to it for a second. The reason I say that is, if you had moved the building as you did, and the patio, I believe you left the pool in the same location, perhaps? I'm not sure if you did or not, and-
It was extended a little to the north.
So, obviously, as an attorney, anyway, I won't keep saying this, but anyone in this field, in your field, knows that when you move buildings around on a site, you have to go back to the building department, I'll say it again, you have to get your survey revised, you have to get a building permit modified. If you had gotten that building permit modified, and this does happen, and the building inspector, the same person, you may or may not, I don't know if, you know, I won't, you know, who said that to you, or didn't, made an error, and you were given a building permit to build this, and then you went for a C of O, and it was denied because of that one-foot separation? That would be a different story, but that did not happen, and let me finish. And the other thing is, that did not happen, and as well, years ago, and we'll have Ann, we'll ask our chief building inspector to comment. Years ago, I grew up out here, and I've been here through many building inspectors, and they have to make an interpretation of this situation. Again, I'll let Ann comment, but you may know Mark from the past. Previous building inspectors used to have, where you stepped down a foot, if you had a step between the two, it was a differentiation between a pool patio and a patio, and I never got that whatsoever, and apparently, Ann Glennon agrees with me when she became building inspector, and I believe she probably researched that, and there was nothing in the code to back that up. So, my point being, if you had gone through all the right steps, it would have been a different story, so that is part of this.
Well, I don't know if it would be a different story, because we, they would have gotten a building permit, I mean, they would say it was done in error. Building department could say, we made a mistake in issuing the building permit, we're going to, you know, we're going to revoke it, we can't approve it, and we'd be in the same position now.
No, you would not, because probably Ann would have seen that building permit, would have said, no, you need five feet of separation, and you would have revised your survey. That's probably what would have happened, because I deal with this all the time in my world.
It's possible, but, I mean-
Very possible. Very possible.
No, I understand, but the point is that sometime, I mean, whatever the mistake was made on the part of the applicant, the building department, whatever, we're in this position now where there is a separation of one foot between these two structures, and there's nothing in the code that says it has to be five feet in order to be separate structures. The five-foot separation has to do only with buildings, accessory buildings and main buildings. So, you can't import one section into another situation that has nothing to do with it. The accessory building code separation was passed for entirely different reasons-
But isn't that an accessory building?
No, we're talking about the patio and the pool.
So, where does the patio, where does the-
Yep, what exactly is that-
So, you have a patio around the accessory building?
Yeah.
There's a patio around, yeah, it's a patio underneath the cabana, or the poolhouse. There's no pool patio, this is, it goes to grass, I mean, there's a coping-
No, that's a pool, that's a pool under that cover, that's not-
It's the pool?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm saying, there's no patio surrounding the pool.
I know, there's a foot of gravel separating the coping and the limestone-
Well, it was grass, but it's gonna be grass again, I mean, it would be grass again.
The thing that's held up with beams, that has lights going around it, is it a solid roof on top?
No, it's a pergola.
It's a pergola.
With spaced-
And is the pergola attached to the cabana?
Is it attached to the cabana, the pergola?
It's all over.
Yes.
So, do you know whether the building department considered the pergola attached to this cabana, and therefore it was part of the-
This, but this wasn't the application, this wasn't even filed for an application, John, that's not what's before us, the pergola, that's, you know, that's-
They had no problem with the pergola.
No, this never got a building permit.
Right.
Yeah.
I think John is answering this specific issue, which is-
Which is the one foot, five foot.
The accessory building, and she's-
Right, right.
Questioning whether this, in fact, fits the definition of a building.
Right, right, right.
But the building inspector had no problem with that pergola, actually, had no problem with anything, except the ones, that separation, didn't have a problem with the moving of the pool, of anything else, it was just going for final CO inspection, the whole house, everything was good, this is the only issue.
How many feet is, are there between the glass sliding doors on the cabana and the pool?
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, I think that's 15 feet?
It's five two-foot courses, or something like that.
I think it's, no, they're three feet long.
And they're two feet, yeah, three, my turn.
I was counting.
So, it's more than five feet?
You mean, from here to here?
Yeah.
To the, to the posts.
To the pool.
Do you have the picture, on the last page, color picture?
I think, all I'm asking is, it's more than five feet?
I have a survey, actually, I have a survey here, but maybe it's not on the survey. Let me just see if the survey was updated. No, the survey, no, this is the old survey. Anyway, the applicant can maybe answer that question, we can ask him for that information. Oh, yes, it is on the survey, I'm sorry. Here, I can scale it. Why don't you continue, Mark, while I scale this off?
Yeah, so, what I was saying was, obviously, the building inspector has reasons to want a separation between the structures, I mean, you have to have some, some separation, but you can't, you can't, like I said before, you can't import this clearly worded provision to something that has nothing to do with buildings, or main buildings or accessory buildings. So, this is a, we're talking about a patio and a pool. So, what I'm asking is that the board look at the code and make their own determination, which is what the board's supposed to do on an appeal, and see if the code supports the building inspector's determination for the five feet.
It looks like nine feet, by the way, nine feet, does that make sense? Ten, 10 feet we're hearing, okay.
The, the board can also modify the determination of the building inspector, I mean, if the board thinks five feet's arbitrary, because it doesn't, there's no place where it really is defined, and there's actually no definition of what a pool patio is, you know, whether a pool patio has to be a certain number of feet, you know, next to a pool or not. I mean, the common sense seems to be, it's touching the pool, it's around the pool, it's somewhere near the pool, but to apply this five-foot thing from the other section to this just seems, it seems arbitrary. So, what we're looking, for one thing, is the double pool setback requirement, which only applied, was extended to patios in, I think it was 1991, I tried to find the, there's nothing written for the reasons why that was done in the local law, but I think it can be assumed that it was about noise, activity, near the property line. In this case, this is a patio that's under the poolhouse that, I mean, the poolhouse is gonna be 10 feet from the property line, no matter what. There's gonna be people in and out of that poolhouse. Whether this edge is one foot, five feet, three feet, four feet from the pool, it's not gonna change the activity by the property line, and it's still gonna be a 10-foot separation between the cabana and the western, eastern property line. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Yep.
You're saying if this was altered, so that that one-foot strip was actually five foot, then it would, by definition, fit the code?
No. The code doesn't say that. There's no five-foot separation in the-
As being interpreted today.
If we followed that, if you said, yes, we think the code says this-
Which is to say, then, that structure's still the same distance away from the-
Exactly, it would make no difference in terms of noise, activity.
Here's, here's what's there right now, right?
This is the building permit that was given.
Yeah, but this, this didn't get a building permit.
I understand.
But this is what's built, that wasn't built.
Okay, I'm sorry, what date are you looking at? That looks different than this 2018-
So, I see, your point was, yeah, that's the grayish grass, right, what does it say? I see what you're asking.
No, it says they were extending the pool patio. The pool was there, or was always there?
The pool was always there, yeah.
So, they were extending this patio to the pool.
And they were meeting a 20-foot, they were meeting the 20-foot setback there, I'm sure.
Is it, how wide is the pool?
I can, I can-
How wide is it?
I can scale this off.
If the cabana is 10 feet, then they meet a 10-foot setback.
So, in the older building permit, they were exactly 20 feet to the patio.
That's fine.
Yep.
That was my question.
Sure, gotcha, makes sense. Okay, so, you know, I think it probably would be good for us to have the building inspector come up and speak, Mark, I think we understand your point, and let's keep moving here. And as well, the applicant can speak as well, but let's hear from Ann, please, first. Good evening again, Ann.
Good evening, Ann Glennon, principal building inspector.
Thank you, I swear you're in again for this hearing. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, my interpretation, when it was asked from me to make the interpretation, it was my understanding that the actual patio was not caught until we were, they were ready for their CO. We didn't know about the patio or the change until the time of the CO, when the inspection was done. The first inspector went out. I don't know what the conversation was, and I'm not even gonna try to say yes or no, what was said. I do know, it's been known in my office since I became principal building inspector, that we've looked at it as a five-foot separation, because my interpretation of the code was the reason for a pool patio being double setbacks is for noise.
Right.
So, putting a one-foot opening in between, or a step down, I don't understand how that would help a noise situation when you're talking about your neighbors.
Right.
So, the patio now has been pushed over, the, the poolhouse has always been allowed to meet the accessory structure. The other way I came up with it was, in our code, a patio is a structure.
Mm-hmm.
So, as a structure, I related that to an accessory building, which is a structure, and it said, five feet separation makes it detached. That is how I came up between the noise ordinance and looking at why, I could give somebody if you may, because there are situations where people have a house, and they wanna connect their pool patio to their house, but they can't because of the exact reason they won't meet the double setback. They give me the five-foot separation, and they're able to come up with a plan to be able to have a patio on their house, and a patio on their pool.
Right, and, and, and I know, in the past, you know, working with you, and I know from experience, that, that this is how you've interpreted it, and this is how projects have been permitted, and you just, as far as you're-
Because right now, that is 10 feet off the property line.
Yes, I know, I know that pool patio is, I see that on the survey, too. And, and, so you, as a building inspector, when this is not codified in the, in the international residential code, then you as, because you're dealing with a local zoning law, so it's, it compels you to interpret and make, it compels you and other building inspectors to make these kind of interpretations, which is what you've done.
Right.
Correct?
Come up with something that's in the code that would give me backing to say why we would make a decision like this.
Right, right.
And the only thing we have in the code is that separation between an accessory structure, such as a garage, which is the only thing in the code, you know, as Mark has researched-
Right.
That tells you that, what makes a five-foot separation consists, makes it detached.
Right, and I imagine you've, I know the, I'm fairly certain, the building, the town attorneys understand that this is the way it's being interpreted by you-
Correct.
Because this comes up often, I'm sure, and I imagine if they did not agree with your interpretation, they would probably wanna talk to you about it, or something, and they have not.
Well, I actually do believe this has been used in decisions on the zoning board in the past, also.
I believe, I believe you're correct, yes, yes. And any other questions for Ann, board members? While she's here?
No.
I guess, I'm just trying to figure out, how would they remedy this, if there were to be a remedy?
Varium?
Well, let's-
They could ask for- They have to get rid of four feet of patio.
Yeah, no.
So, it's-
Yeah, the remedies are, you ask for a variance, or-
Varium.
It's either denied, or you come for a variance, or it's denied, or you fix it and make it code compliant, but that's not, right now, we're just here for, for this reason.
Right.
And, yeah, and thank you, Ann, for your coming, waiting all night. Michael, yes, if you'd like to, and thank you for waiting all night, Michael. If you could introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Michael Kirchman, K-I-R-C-H.
I'm sorry.
Michael Kirchman, K-I-R-C-H, M-A-N-N, 60 Gansett Lane, I'm a Gansett.
Thank you, Michael. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good evening, again.
Good evening. So, I'm, I'm actually an architect, I'm a licensed architect in New York State, as is my wife, the two of us actually designed the project together, believe it or not, we're still married after that. So, we're, you know, as, I guess, most architects are and should be by law, we're stickler for details, we're stickler for the code. And we undertook this, we hadn't done a building here before, so we, we got some help through a co-consultant, through, obviously, our surveyor, through our contractor, and our attorney, to make sure that we're meeting all the, all the requirements in the zoning and the code, et cetera. And in most cases, we actually went a little bit further, if we had to be 10 foot off the boundary, we'd be 10 foot six, or 10 foot two, if we had to be X height, we would take it down a few inches, make sure we were, we were very conservative, the way that we did it and approached it, and we, we thought we were being, you know, very diligent in the way we're doing it. As we went through this, the first, the first application in October 2016, we had the, the cabana at the short end of the pool, which had a patio all the way up to the cabana from the pool, it was basically a solid patio, that was approved. We then made a design change, which moved the cabana to the long end of the pool where it currently is now. We revised the drawings, we printed a full set for the Department of Buildings, we went into the Department of Buildings. Through luck or circumstance, that I can't remember, we actually took Mark with us. If there was any issues, we wanted to be able to talk through those issues with the building department.
Who's Mark?
Mark Catalano.
Oh, oh, that Mark, I thought there was in the back.
Because we had, we had been given advice by the, our surveyor, Gary Benz, our contractor, Tom Cooper, and our co-consultant, that we needed to have a separation of 12 inches between the two structures, between the patio and the pool. We tried to look for the actual text in the code to find that, we could not find actual text in the zoning code that specified what that distance was, but we were advised it would be 12 inches. We redid the drawings, we took them into the Department of Buildings, and we sat with the Department of Buildings. I remember having a discussion with somebody there, because I was carrying an SOM bag, which is where I used to work back in the day, and they had had a story about SOM, so it was 2000, November 2017, we went through the changes, we took everyone through with the bubbled plans. I actually asked the question whether or not we needed to get some sort of receipt. After, after we had gone through everything, they had said to us, everything's fine, proceed, and I actually said, is there some kind of a receipt that we can get for that approval? They said, no receipt is necessary.
The building inspector said, no, you didn't have to get a modified permit?
Nope. And, and again, I'm, I've sworn, I've sworn in.
Who'd you name?
I do not know the, the names of the individuals at the building department.
I mean, all of these consultants, I mean, you know, it's very clear.
I mean, if you were concerned about a receipt, wouldn't you be concerned about the person you sat down with?
And getting a building permit?
It doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, the, the person was obviously behind the counter, we went, and we went through all the plans, so any, so-
See, here, Mark, just, Michael, pardon me, here, on this right here, you know, this is your receipt, you got a building permit with this survey, and this is a 20-foot separation between your neighbor and your patio. So, you know, it's, it's also just a shame, because it would have saved you a lot of aggravation if you had gone for a building permit, and they would have said, guys, you need five feet separation here, and you would have built that.
Honestly, if, if we had known that, if we had known about the five-foot separation, we actually did rebuild the pool. If we had known about the five-foot separation, I would have gladly have moved-
The pool.
The pool to accommodate that. We genuinely had no idea it was something that we, when it came to the final CO, everything else, the whole, the whole house was approved.
But it sounds like, it sounds like, it sounds like you're trying to blame it on a building inspector, rather than going in and re-modifying your building permit.
Well, we-
That's your responsibility.
Just for, just for clarity.
It sounds to us like you're trying to put the blame on a third, you know-
I don't think, I don't think I'm trying to assign blame to anybody, but I'm, I think I'm trying to highlight that-
You went through the, you were making it-
We tried to go through the, the correct processes, we brought in the revised drawings, we submitted the revised drawings showing the exact condition with the survey, the survey actually showed the 12-inch spacer, we got the verbal approval to proceed, those, those drawings were left with the Department of Buildings, we then proceeded with the construction, and we were surprised to find that-
And you don't know who the inspector was in all this time, that you did all these meetings, and Mark, none of you knew?
There was only one meeting.
Not like it really matters, it was a mistake, whether it was Joe, or Bob, or whoever it was, in the building department, doesn't really matter. What matters, unfortunately, is you did not take the final step and get a building permit, and you wouldn't have, this would not have happened.
I, I agree, and I think-
It's unfortunate situation, right?
In hindsight, obviously-
Yeah.
We would have done things differently had we known, but we, we were, we were informed to proceed with what we had, and they, they had a copy of the drawings, which was all bubbled and, and put in there. So, the, the solution that we've been advised in order to resolve, I think somebody asked the question on, what was the solution? The solution that we've been advised is to basically demo out another four feet of the, of the stone-
Right.
Back to this point over here, so basically, the line comes back to about there.
Yes.
And then fill that in with, with grass.
Yes.
So, we, we could do that, but before, you know, before going down that route, we just wanted to make an appeal and say-
Sure.
You know, we, we genuinely tried to, to do everything correctly, and, you know, it's-
No, I don't doubt that at all, yeah. And just so you know, Michael, if, if we do uphold the building inspector on this, and you come back and, you know, take away some of that paving to make it code compliant, if you have the coverage on your property that's legal, you can extend that patio in other directions and give yourself space, as long as it meets coverage and all that sort of thing, so-
For us, I think we're, we're done with the construction.
Yeah, right, right.
We just, we're looking to, obviously, this is gonna cost us money now to actually get rid of that stone, because it's got a concrete base, I mean, that's part of the issue here, is the expense now of-
I mean, you do, you do have the option of applying for a variance.
Yeah, I guess-
Yeah, that's, that's your call, that's your call.
That's later.
Well, take it one step, why don't we take it one step at a time, we don't have to really even discuss-
It was so much fun tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, and we would have if, if, if there was something to, to apply for a And we would have if, if, if there was something to, to apply for a variance from in this, but we didn't think there is, because it's not in the code. So, but the other thing we wanted to suggest is, I mean, the board can modify the, not, I'm not saying reverse, or, but can modify the building inspector's determination of the five feet. Since it's not written anywhere that's applicable, you have, you could modify that determination to a lesser extent, and the reason I'm bringing that up is because to cut this thing back four more feet would really, I mean, you'd be behind these, these columns, and it would, I mean, it's a lot of work, and it would, as Michael will tell you, would not look so good with the-
Mark, just so I can interrupt, are you asking the board to modify it just for this applicant?
I think we've got to keep moving along here, I think we all understand-
Because that's not something they could do, they would have to modify it, and that, that would be the interpretation going forward.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying-
You'd want that interpretation for all, all building in the future, not just for this applicant.
Well, I mean, God bless all future builders, but I'm, all I can say is for this one-
You do realize if they do that, that's for everyone.
That's fine.
Okay, we're getting-
Or, or more thing, I would say-
We're getting the bump.
We're getting the far field.
You've got, got way more than your time, and, and we all, I think we all completely understand the history and we appreciate-
Okay.
You know, it's just, we're just repeating ourselves, and, and, okay, we understand what happened, I think we understand that, everything, we just have to move along here.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. We, we'll hear from, yes, sir, and then Ann, if you wanted to say anything. Good evening.
Tom Cooper, I'm the contractor.
Hey, Tom, if, if you could give us your address and-
78 Long Lane, East Hampton, New York.
Thanks, and if you could, I'll square you in, Tom, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to confirm though, there was no malicious, obviously, intent here in the sense that-
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
We put the stone there for a reason, because that's what we were told. I'm a little surprised that Ann's even here talking about the case, because she actually, we, Michael and I did go in and met with Ann about it, and she did say she was not going to fight this case, in the sense that she knows that there were some issues. And I will say, I did go and ask for a modification, I went in personally, and so I was told, just like Michael was told, your, your setbacks were fine, you're looking good, we'll do it at the end when we get the final survey.
Who told you this?
It doesn't matter, it's one of the building inspectors.
Well-
What?
It, it-
So-
Okay, well-
All I'm saying is, you were told that the, the plans were fine, we're meeting setbacks, right?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, all you have to do is come back when you get the final survey, and you'll be fine. So, the only thing I want to make sure is that we, I had known that we needed separation, I told Michael that, I didn't know the exact size, I know that New York State's requiring five feet, that's where I think Ann gets the number five feet from, it doesn't come from anywhere else but New York State. So, I was told it was a foot, and the surveyor was told it was a foot. I don't know where we got that from, to be honest with you, but I, I'm more saying that there was no malicious intent, right?
We understand that for sure.
And that we did go through the due diligence to try to make this right and what it was supposed to be. I don't think Michael should necessarily be, or Mr. Kirchman should be penalized for trying to go through that process and making sure it was done right. I mean-
Unfortunately, no, I think we understand, Tom, we know there was no malicious intent, we certainly, yeah. But thanks for coming out, thanks, Tom, thanks. Ann, did you have another comment, and did you like, wish to make another comment, Ann, before we shut down?
So, if a modification was submitted to my office, I, and Mark normally knows that we would do another building permit for it.
Right.
An application would go with it. I don't know of another plan, I don't remember discussing this with anybody, the first time I knew about this was actually when the interpretation came in, I, I read the interpretation, didn't know what it was even about. I knew this was in my basket for a CO that was turned down, and I thought they were going for a variance.
Right.
That's, that's as much as I know about this application.
Right, great, okay, thank you, Ann, thank you. Okay, okay, then, I think that's, I think, I think we have the full story here. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, board members, to close the public hearing in the written record for 60 Gansett Lane, excuse me, LLC, 60 Gansett Lane in Ambequins, tax map number 300-172-7-38. And thank you all for coming out and moving along. I'm sorry.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you, thank you all.
Don't go packing up.
What? We're not done?
We're not done.
Okay. I'm just packing up the one I'm done with.
Well, okay.
7:30, 6:30, 7:30. Okay.
What are we doing?
Okay, what time we have here? We're going to try to wrap things up.
05.
Give it just a few items if we can get through them.
Yeah.
The next thing you have on here is the Gwen Jones, Farrow Beach.
Right.
That has, the, the request for modification has been withdrawn.
Correct.
So that one can be off of our agenda.
It was withdrawn, you got-
In that letter, yeah, that's what I wanted to discuss, great. Okay, so that's off. Dankowitz?
Dankowitz is a simple clarification for the sake, I even have the, it ready, I don't know if the board recalls, this was one where it was a denial, it was Article 78, and there was a stipulation, a settlement in, in getting ready for the COO, there actually was an additional variance, a ninth variance, allowing for a setback for the pool. It theoretically could come under any other relief necessary, but to have a cleaner record, the building inspector and our office suggested that we do a slight modification to include that variance in here, that it was intended, it was on the survey, that was part of the settlement decision. You couldn't have done some of the others without being aware that there was a need for a variance, it's only for 4.6 feet required for side, side yard variance, and-
That's correct.
So that we're just looking to see if the board is okay with modifying it.
Okay, so it's, we're just cleaning that up then?
Just, it's a cleanup.
Okay, that is in, that's you, Roy.
So, do you have that one?
I have the-
It's the Dankowitz.
I have the-
John and Patricia Dankowitz. Don't have to read the whole thing.
He's just going to read the name and all, go ahead, Roy.
Therefore, I make a motion to accept the notification of Dankowitz, Suffolk Tax Map Number 300-23-2-16 and 18.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Okay.
And you concur.
And I concur as well, thank you, yes, and that was a resolution, amending determination. Okay. This goes to Denise, this goes to you.
Yes.
Great, okay, board members, move forward to table, the, Denise has completed and posted our minutes, and so we can read them this week, so we'll table that till next week. And let's try to walk through these resolutions that council has so nicely prepared.
Well, Fisher, we have-
You don't want to do Fisher?
We have a request that we put this off, but it's not a request to withdraw by the, by the applicant.
Oh, and Fisher?
There was an email that basically said, "If you wait a little while and get our other application in, then perhaps it'll all make more sense," but it's not actually a request to withdraw. This was a denial of the request for the modification, because it was, I believe, I'm guessing at this point, because at the late hour, I don't recall what I wrote.
This basement ceiling, Mark-
The Fisher Wallace, and I believe that-
The ceiling, basement ceiling, right.
There was, the board had decided that it was too complicated for a modification, and it should come in as a full application.
Right, so it makes no sense for us not to, I think we want to deny this modification and let them do what they want.
That's, that seems to be the best thing at this point.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, though, on this-
Sorry?
Which one are we on?
Fisher.
Fisher Wallace, yeah.
So-
Okay, again, but, you know, hang on, going back to Farrow Beach, no, Farrow Beach.
Okay.
This doesn't say that they're withdrawing the modification.
We just received a letter.
Yes, they-
When did you get the-
That's the one that I handed around to you before the meeting?
That's the one right there, the first line says that they're withdrawing it. The first line, doesn't it say that they're withdrawing it?
No, this, no, they're withdrawing the, hang on, they're withdrawing the application for Fisher, the entire application, at 82 Fleming. So they would, I want to make sure that this application is withdrawn, as we're submitting a new application, so the board will get the new application shortly.
Okay.
Second item, is Farrow Beach, that was discussed last week.
That's what I-
This modification needs a lot more information to be ready, to be reviewed, and I never received Ann's memo till this week, blah, 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 and it goes on and on.
Well, let me see that, please, let's go.
I apologize.
Let's take one thing at a time.
Jones was not withdrawn.
Right.
Can we deal with Fisher first?
Let's do Fisher first.
Sorry, apologies.
It was withdrawn.
They're withdrawing the entire application.
Okay, so the-
Yeah, but, but even so, it's like if we've already denied Fisher, and you've already written, have you, you've written the resolution?
I don't think we-
And hold on, let me finish, I don't think, because someone sends in an email and says we want to pull it, you know, it, it's done, we've already denied it, and I think we should just deny it and, and let them do what they want next.
When did we deny it?
At the last meeting.
Last meeting.
Where they were present.
Who was present?
We denied it at the last work session.
Fisher, I'm talking about Fisher.
Yeah, Fisher, was discussed at the last-
I don't think so.
Or the one before, but, so whenever, we did, we did deny it, though.
It was at the work session last week.
And the basement ceiling height?
Yes.
Yes, that was at, was that last week?
I don't think so.
That was last week.
We did, we denied Fisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Right, so I say we just move forward, if they want to come back with another application.
It was going to be withdrawn.
Oh, Denise has a resolution right here.
Well, they, they said they're withdrawing the application, so it's not, yeah.
For Fisher, we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right, but we've already denied it, are they-
Yeah, okay, okay, we're denying a mod, sorry.
A modification, so let's just deny our modification.
And they were withdrawing anyway, okay.
It basically is not saying that the application is denied, it's saying a modification is inappropriate for this kind of request.
We're closing out the, we're making the record complete.
Right.
Closes it out.
So, let's take care of that first, and we'll talk about Gwen and Jones.
Okay.
So-
Okay, so for Fisher Wallace, tax back 300-17-1-10, at 80, I think the address, is it 83 or 82 Fleming Road?
82.
Yeah, this says 83, is a type on the address.
Well-
So does this need to be retyped? The address is wrong, tax map 300-17-1-10.
Yeah.
You want to change it?
I can change it.
Okay.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
That's easy enough to change.
Yeah, the tax map number is correct, so.
Yep.
What's it called when the plane is up in the air, just circling the airport? We seem to be circling the airport at the moment.
A couple of these, right.
Yeah, well, so.
I see, okay.
Somebody needs to radio in.
I know, let's, let's keep moving, let's go, Terry, let's go, you want to go?
Oh, I start laughing at-
Property location modified to 82 Fleming Road, Montauk, tax map 300-17-1-10, make a motion to deny the proposed modifications for the basement ceiling.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Okay, with regard to, considering the hour and, and the confusion, we were going to discuss, we're planning to discuss Gwen Jones and last week, and there's a whole history there that I was going to ask council to go through, but considering the complexity of that and the hour, and also this email from Andy, which is simply just an email, and Terry's right, he's talking about getting the stuff together, and then he's going to pull it together so he can, relevant, and, and so he's asking us to refrain from acting on this until all of these documents are submitted. Personally, my feeling is, is that we table this, one thing, table this until next week, and-
There is no next week.
There is no next week.
We'll table it for two weeks.
Okay, my problem with that-
Because I want to just, because, let me just finish, because I would like to just deny the modification that was in front of us, or, let's just deny it now then.
Let's just deny that modification, the original modification to withdraw that-
Right, and let them come back, yes.
One condition from the original 1982 decision, let's just deny that modification. They can do whatever they want to do for their NRSP and everything else that they want to work on.
Right, okay, I'm fine with that myself.
So, I need info.
How do you all feel, board members?
I'm ambivalent in terms of what, what is, what is best for us to do.
Well, they submitted a modification, we, I think it's right, I think it's right to-
To withdraw that condition in 1982.
To make a decision on the modification.
And go through, and let them go through the, the steps.
I mean, the rationale-
Because otherwise, we're like, we've got all these files-
It really needs to be a new public hearing and so forth, and-
Goes back 35 years.
Thirty years.
No, that doesn't need to be a new hearing, that part just needs to be denied.
Right, no, if they want to bring a new evidence-
You know, I don't have the document in front of me, but the reasoning for wanting us to remove that condition was because it was from 1982, and it was old, and they didn't do it, they didn't meet that condition.
Right, right.
So now they want us to just remove it.
Right, and now they want to merge, and, and I will add this, and then we'll keep moving, there, we, we all saw that Denise did a lot of research in Joanne Powell, and there was a lot of memos that we all saw that were emailed to us, that are in the files, that there was no merger of this modification and the NRSP that was filed, and it's becoming a whole stack of papers, he said, she said, and I, I, I feel we should just deny this modification.
I agree, I think we need to, we should deny it, and I think it needs to come to us one whole application, so we can see everything.
And public hearing, and the public hearing, and neighbors, everything, good. It sounds like we're, Joan, do you agree?
I guess the one thing is, if we deny it, can we deny it without prejudice to bring it before, again?
You can deny it because it's, it's too old to bring as a modification. You can deny it because it's too old to bring as a modification, and there's too many other issues going on. You don't have to deny it on the merits of what they're asking for.
I would prefer to do that, because I feel at this point, the record is so muddled, that-
That part isn't.
Well, they came to us with a muddled-
That it's, it's 37 years old.
Right.
We can deny it on that basis alone.
Right. And as well, they have the right, we don't have to, they have the right to do what they want, to come back or not come back, and I don't want to make any conditions, or, it's up to them what they do.